All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Monday, November 4th, 2019 Board of Commissioners meeting. This evening for the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance, we have Reverend Jerry Cribb of the Pillmore Memorial United Methodist Church. Sir, if you'd like to come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation, that'd be great.
I understand. Lord, as we gather today, please instruct us and teach us in the way we should go in this Commissioner's meeting. Please counsel all in attendance with your loving eye on us. Let our aims in this meeting be aligned with your direction. Let our plans be orchestrated by you. Lord, let your will be done in this meeting so that this can be a time that is based on your desire for us according to your holy will. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Do we have any changes for the agenda this evening?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I do have one amendment to the agenda tonight. I do want to, under administrative reports, I want to remove the Lower Currituck Volunteer Fire Department update to be determined at a later date.
Okay. Thank you. Second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all. Next item on the agenda is public comment. I do not have anyone sign up for public comment this evening. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to anything this evening? All right. Seeing no one, I will close public comment and move on to Commissioner's report. Change it up a little bit this evening. Mr. Jarvis, would you like to lead off this evening?
Well, thank you very much. First of all, it's a pleasure to have Congressman Murphy and his wife here. So, welcome. And I first want to start by saying that I attended the soups and sauces class by our Extension Office on October 24th, and it was fun. It was easy to follow. It was delicious. And I would just like to thank the Extension Office for all they do and all the wonderful programs. And I encourage citizens to sign up for their classes and become a more enlightened citizen. I also attended a lecture by the Currituck Historical Society at the historic Jarvisburg Colored School. The lecture was given by Melissa Timmo of the Office of State Archaeology on October 29th, and the purpose is to highlight the mapping of African-American cemeteries in our county. And Barbara Snowden, I would like to thank her for arranging it. It was very informative, and I look forward to working with this endeavor. And finally, I just have to say what a wonderful time Heritage Day was on Saturday at the Currituck County Rural Center. For all those who attended, I know you had a great time. The food was great, the fun was great, and that little baby goat, I mean, that little baby pig, too cute. And just congratulations to all the workers and volunteers here in the county that put that on. It was a great time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Etheridge, the left Commissioner Etheridge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, too, attended the Heritage Festival on Saturday and was there the whole time, and it was very well attended, and I'd like to thank Tamara Kugler and her staff with tourism and the volunteers who made it a success. They had a lot of good food, of which I did partake of some of it, but it was very good. But the thing that impressed me most about it was the number of people that came to the festival that had been back there to the Rural Center for the first time. To everyone that came up and stopped and talked to me, they could not believe that Currituck County would have such a facility like that for the citizens of Currituck County. And as I said, I was asked, along with Commissioner Jarvis and Commissioner Etheridge, to give some opening remarks. Seeing that group there on Saturday reinforced my belief that the county made the proper decision in purchasing that property. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner McCord.
Christmas parade, December 6th, first Friday of the month. Mark it on your calendar. It grows every year. I'd like to see it grow even more. I did not get to attend the festival at the Rural Center. Other obligations, nothing really else to report tonight.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Manon.
A couple of things tonight. Again, I do want to welcome U.S. Congressman and his wife here tonight. Appreciate you stopping by at Currituck County. Two things with the Heritage Festival, that was a success, and the local charity, Currituck Kids, did raise over $1,000 with the tasting, which was going to stay in the county to help the kids in Currituck County. So, I just want to thank everyone who came out to help with that. And firefighters, just remember, you know, Currituck County this year, the structure fires have been, I mean, just, I mean, just every time we turn around, it's more and more structure fires. So, keep your volunteers in prayer, and if you want to get involved, please contact your local fire departments. They'd be more than happy to have you there. And one last thing for our volunteer firefighters in the county. You may recall that the state passed a bill for any volunteer firefighter to receive a lifetime hunting and fishing license for half off for any volunteer firefighter. And you cannot do that at your local wildlife agency. You do have to contact the state agency, and they'll send you the forms, but a volunteer then can purchase a lifetime hunting and fishing license for half off. So, that's just a thank you to the fire departments for all the hard work out there. And that number is 1-888-248-6834. And that's all I have tonight.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Etheridge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last month, I had the honor of attending the Currituck Chamber of Commerce Small Business Awards Dinner, and I would like to congratulate all the winners. Small businesses make up 99% of all businesses in America. They are the engines that job creations come from. Their hiring has a huge impact on the economy and the health of a community and its people. They participate in government and community events. They sponsor sports teams, and they donate to our local nonprofits. So, you can all see, we are really the winners of this because they chose to do business here in Currituck County. I know we don't say it enough, but I'd like to thank each one of the businesses and their employers who decided they wanted to work here in Currituck County and helping to make Currituck the great county it is. Also, on Saturday, I attended the Heritage Festival Park at the Rural Center, and again, I'd like to thank everybody for their hard work for making it such a wonderful success. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Belmont.
I'm pleased to bring you some information that, following this weekend, all three Carolina Storm football teams, that's the youth football team in the county, won their respective district Super Bowls and are playing in the state championships in Charlotte, North Carolina this coming weekend. In the history of Currituck County youth football, this is the first time that all three teams reached the states and the districts. We have 81 kids that are participating with the Carolina Storm, and they've played with the discipline and the grit, showing their determination both on and off the field. The sportsmanship displayed by these three young, by these young men has created this opportunity, and it's well-deserved, and it's a tribute to the hard work that they and their coaches and their parents have put in to accomplish this. Carolina Storm is asking our community for donations to help offset the cost for the travel lodging and expenses such as hotel rooms, food, snacks, water, and transportation. Donations can be mailed to P.O. Box 704 Moyoc, North Carolina, 27958, dropped off at the county manager's assistants, Administrative Assistant Office, or received through Dana and Jimmy Saunders at 757-240-6813 or 757-332-0339. There will be a Facebook fundraiser as well. I know you don't want me to read that address off, but if you go to the county's website, that link will be there. Please help and support these kids. You know, so many life lessons are taught in youth athletics, and to have three teams in the same sport at the same time reach this level of play is truly, it's truly phenomenal. So, thank you in advance for your support. That's all I have.
Thanks, sir.
Can I add one thing to that?
Of course.
One thing that Commissioner Belmont stated is 100% correct. In my other capacity, we've had to attend a couple of those games and had some problems with some of the other visiting facilities. The Currituck teams, the way they're coached and those kids behave and their sportsmanship is just, it's so above par, all those other teams. It's, I mean, it's amazing. I mean, like I said, it's a, those guys do a really, really good job coaching those kids.
Thanks, sir. All right. And lastly, for my comments this evening, we have a few things happening in Corolla that we haven't talked about in a while. I constantly get asked about Whalehead and dredging the boat ramp there. We're circling back to that again and not promising anything, but we are circling back to that again, and hopefully we'll have a more favorable outcome in the future and get us some access over in Corolla at the Whalehead Club. For those of you that have seen the new ABC store sign, we've had that up for a while, but that's moving along. It's a little slower-moving project, and it's projected to open in 2021, and I just wanted to pass it along since I got a nice shiny sign out there now, and everybody's asking when it's going to be done, so that'll be another year and a half from now. And for those of you who don't get the management report, the Moyoc Park is moving along, and construction is supposed to start in the spring of 2020. And I know we've been talking about that for a long time, but we're finally moving that and towards fruition, so yay for Moyoc Park. Corova Roads, as people in Corova know, for the most part, we have a subcommittee there that talks about the roads, fixing them, and that committee went and decided to replace over 20 culvert pipes that have been crushed over the years and hopefully bring some relief on drainage up there and improve that, as well as several other roads that are slated to be addressed that have not been touched, and of course, fixing the existing roads up there that are currently under that plan. The Wild Horse Fence has been much talked about lately, and we're getting ever closer to repairing that. It is a big process, finding someone who is willing to come out and install the cabling necessary and the pilings necessary when there's big jobs everywhere else. This is a fairly small job, so please bear with us. We've been working hard with the Corolla Wild Horse Fund to make that happen, and we expect some movement on that, hopefully in the near future. We also are adding some more sidewalks in Corolla. Dolphin Street is in the works in the Whalehead subdivision. We're shooting for a May 2020 completion on that. And we're also working on a Corolla Village walking plan, and we have to acquire their land rights over there, so it's going to take a little while longer, but we are working forward on getting that straight as well, and hopefully we can have that come fruition in the near future. And just as a housekeeping note, the second board meeting in November may be canceled at this time. There's nothing on it, so just keep an eye out for that. We may or may not be here in a couple of weeks. That's all I have this evening. All right. County Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First off, at each of your stations, there's a list of the key actions that came out of our strategic planning two-day workshop that we did. I'd like for the board to take those home and just rank those, one being your top priority through the rest of them. We'll use, we'll add those scores together. The lowest score, we'll set kind of this top priority for staff, and we'll work from there. Want to say that I appreciate everything that you guys did dedicating to that. We're looking forward to seeing what comes out of that. Obviously, as we move into the budget process, this will help inform the staff's budget priorities as we, as we look at where we can spend the limited tax dollars that we have. I'm going to probably embarrass somebody a little bit with this next one, so I'll apologize in advance, but we, we have a, one of our telecommunicators in the room, not in that facility right now, and Renee Etheridge, and I wanted to share this story, just so everybody understands how, how important the job that they do is. About sometime in the last couple of weeks, she had the opportunity to actually talk somebody through delivering a baby. And so, everybody thinks about the negative that comes from that, but they are there through all kinds of situations, and so I think it's important for us to remember that, that what they do is important, and I won't ask her to come up here because that probably really would embarrass her.
Yeah, she doesn't look like she wants to come up here.
Yeah. So, I thought we'd give her a hand. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, sir.
And again, I want to make a correction. I want to apologize. I think earlier I may have stated the U.S. Congressman and his wife, so I want to make the correction when I stated that. It's not his wife is with her tonight, so I want to apologize.
Clean your glasses, sir. All right. Thank you. Well, and with that, the Congressman is up next on the agenda. I'm sure he will properly chastise you. I'd like to welcome Congressman Greg Murphy. Come on up and talk to us, sir, please.
Good evening, and thank you for the time. Shall I do it from here?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for the time just to come and meet with me. I want to introduce someone, Lyndy Robinson. She's my district director. My wife is back home, and Ashley drives a lot with her, so it's okay. We're not going to tell her that you have. I will tell you, it's been now... Six weeks? We're good? It's been about six weeks since I've been on the job and have tried to be very intentional during times of away from Washington, D.C. to come out and be in the district. It's been a, it's been a whirlwind. I came into Washington, D.C. at, let's just say, interesting times, and we'll put it that way. But we're being very, very intentional about putting the Office of Constituent Services back together again. With Walter Jones telling folks that he was not going to run again, and then with his, you know, untimely death, we've had a large backlog of cases that need to be dealt with, and we're really working hard through that. We're, we're trying to look at the Office of Congress. You have to look at it in two different ways. One is the political side, which is very, very important. That's taking votes, making initiative, writing bills, and the other side is constituent services. And right now, given the fact that the impeachment process has pretty much sucked all the wind out of everything else in Washington, D.C., we're also really putting a lot of effort into constituent services. We will have three offices to open up initially. One will be the office in Greenville, which is Walter Jones' old office. We're going to have two full-time staff there, actually three. We're opening up, having an opening house in Jacksonville on Wednesday. We're going to have two full-time staffers there, and we're going to have a third office up here in Edenton. In Edenton, the office will be in the city complex, and we're going to work on, once we get those established, probably having another one in Craven County and Carteret County. So, I want to just make sure that everybody knows that the Office of Congress for North Carolina District 3 is open. I plan to be accessible. I plan to be a congressman that you guys can come to, and I want to be here for you. This is my purpose. My job is to serve the people of the 3rd District, and I'm really humbled to do so. We have a great congressman for years and years, and we have a new, a new person taking their place, and I want to just make sure that you guys know that I'm available to you. So, I thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions if you do, but please, if you ever need anything, you can either contact me directly or you can have my district director, Lyndy Robinson.
Thank you. Questions? Comments? No? Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you so much for your time.
Appreciate your time. Thank you. Thanks for coming up. All right. Next item on the agenda, public hearings. Item A 19-22, Corolla Chapel Conditional Rezoning. Request for a conditional rezoning of property located at 1136 Corolla Village Road from single-family residential to outer bank, single-family residential Outer Banks to conditional general business. And this evening, we have Ms. Jenny present.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening. The applicant, Mr. Jim Southern, the pastor of the Corolla Chapel, is requesting a conditional rezoning of the church property from SFO, which is single-family residential Outer Banks, to conditional general business. The property is currently used as a church, and the applicant is proposing that the property be conditionally zoned to continue to be used as a church, and also, the applicant proposes that future uses of the property may include daycare and after-school programs. The property is located at 1136 Corolla Village Road. I was going to kind of orient you to the property.
Yep, she's circling for you.
The lighthouse is, you can go out to the lighthouse. Down here. The lighthouse is down here, C12, and then it's back in the village. So, the property, the subject property is zoned SFO. The property to the north is zoned conditional general business, and you can see it's, it's the cross-hatched property there, and it's the, actually, the site of the 12-bedroom Corolla Village Inn that was completed earlier this year in May. The property to the south is zoned general business and includes retail shops, and the property to the east is zoned general business, and telephone utilities are located on the parcel. The property to the west is zoned SFO, single-family residential, and it's currently of residential The applicant, this is the reason for the conditional rezoning request. The applicant desires to construct a fellowship hall addition on the north side of the existing church building, and through review of the building permit application that was turned in, it was determined that the addition will not meet the maximum lot coverage requirements for the zoning district it's currently located in. The maximum lot coverage allowance in the SFO zoning district is 30%. The general business zoning district allows 60% lot coverage, and the conditional rezoning will allow an increase in lot coverage for construction of the proposed fellowship hall addition, and it will specify allowable uses of the property. The addition as proposed will result in approximately 52% lot coverage. A community meeting was held on August 19th, 2019, and the attendees were in support of the rezoning request, and a community meeting summary is available in your agenda packet. The 2006 Land Use Plan classifies the site as full service in the Corolla Sub Area. The proposed conditional rezoning is consistent with the policies of the Land Use Plan, including commercial development policy CD6, that appropriate office and institutional development, such as professional offices, small churches, individual medical offices, and the like, shall be encouraged to locate as a transitional land use between residential areas and commercial or industrial activities of higher intensity. And the request is also consistent with the special policies applicable to the Outer Banks OB5. Currituck County, through its actions and decisions, shall seek to preserve the historic character and heritage of the Corolla Village area of the Outer Banks. Also, the Corolla Village Small Area Plan, it's within the Corolla Village Small Area Plan boundaries, and that plan classifies the site as mixed-use. Areas designated as mixed-use in that plan are characterized by a diverse mix of land uses, including human-scale, commercial, residential, governmental, recreational, and civic uses, and the proposed conditional rezoning is consistent with the policies of the Corolla Village Small Area Plan, including the Land Use Policy LU1, to recognize the uniqueness of the area by maintaining desirable characteristics, such as building style, scale, and architectural features, and by supporting development concepts that foster and promote the character, culture, and history of Corolla Village, and also Land Use Action LU1, which is, in reviewing development applications, promote new development to be constructed in a style similar to the existing look and feel of Corolla Village, as well as in keeping with the Outer Banks-style architecture. Sorry, I didn't advance my slide there. So, in speaking to those two, two policies of the Corolla Village Small Area Plan, this is the architectural elevation of the proposed addition, and this rendering is basically a mirror image of the, if you're looking at, at the church building, the, the left side of the building, this is going to be on the right side, and it's, it's practically a mirror image, and it's reflective of the style, scale, and architectural features unique to the Corolla Village area. In the Corolla Village area, there are several buildings with white exteriors, horizontal siding, similarly-sized windows, and pitched roofs. The request is also consistent with the Corolla Village Small Area Plan Land Use Policy 3, that future development should be consistent with the future land use map for Corolla Village. In determining whether to approve or deny a conditional rezoning, the Board of Commissioners shall adopt a written statement of consistency and reasonableness. Staff suggests that this conditional zoning is, request is consistent with the 2006 Land Use Plan as well as the Corolla Village Small Area Plan because appropriate institutional development is encouraged to locate as a transitional land use between residential areas and commercial activities of higher intensity. The county seeks to preserve the historic character and heritage of Corolla Village, and the proposed, proposed development is consistent with the future land use map for Corolla Village. It is reasonable and in the public interest because it allows the use to continue and to be expanded in accordance with the UDO, and it allows for an increase, increase in community service opportunities for the Corolla Chapel. Staff, TRC, and the Planning Board all recommend approval subject to proposed zoning conditions. These proposed conditions of approval have been agreed to by the owner. One, allowable uses of the property shall be limited to the institutional use classification use types, religious institution, childcare center as a potential future use, and after-school program as a potential future use. Number two, prior to construction of the proposed addition shown on the conceptual development plan, the applicant shall submit an application for site plan approval. Three, future development shall conform to the enclosed conceptual development plan. Four, the proposed addition shall be constructed per the enclosed architectural renderings to promote a style similar to the existing look and feel of Corolla Village. And five, if the applicant desires to operate a daycare center and/or after-school program, excuse me, additional review by the technical review committee is required.
Any questions for Mr.?
I was just wondering, if they use it for a childcare, will they have to have more bathrooms? And I noticed, looking at the plan, it only looks like there's one ladies' room and one gentleman restroom, and will that affect the septic also system?
It will. It probably will affect the septic. I'm not sure about number of bathrooms, but that was a comment from TRC by Joe Hobbs, the health inspector, that if they do decide to try to permit one of those future uses, that it has to go back through the technical review committee process, and that will be evaluated at that time.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay. Do you know if this actually has septic or if it's on county water?
It's septic. It's currently septic. There is sewer available in that area, though.
Okay.
I believe.
Okay. You're my next call. You can come on up and speak to us, sir. Tell us a little about your project.
My name's Jim Southern. I'm pastor at Corolla Chapel, and I'm excited to be here because this reflects just what's happening there in the village. We're excited to be a part. Over the last four years, the chapel has really reached out into the community. Part of the reasonings for this addition is that we're overlapping services. Many times, the local school, the village school, Waters Edge, uses our facility for extra classroom space or whenever they use, have to gather as a larger group, and that ties up our fellowship hall and the, and our current fellowship hall in the winter months. If you come into our facility, into the sanctuary this time of year, you will start seeing rows and rows and rows of bags and groceries and things like that for the outreach that we do here for Currituck Mainland in the holidays, which we can't store in our current fellowship hall because we allow the school to use it without any cost. hall, because we allow the school to use it without any cost. During the summertime, we have had an extensive outreach and support for the international students. As y'all know, there's 300 or 400 international students that come to work. They get to Corolla, and they are isolated. We've been able to reman, not remanufacture, but rehab about 200 bicycles that we make available to the students. But we also do a weekly dinner, where we serve 80 to 100 students a week, and we're just seeing the inadequacies of our current facility. Right now, if you leave the kitchen, you enter to a small room that has about six doors, and you have to pass through that with hot pots and pans. And so, the new facility will have a kitchen that will serve directly into the fellowship hall. So, the reference to the future daycare or after-school program is certainly contingent on what may happen related to the bridge. Right now, there's not a current need, but in the future, there may be, and we want to be future-looking. We currently have a membership of about 40. We are first and foremost a Christian church. We're interdenominational. We serve both Protestant, Catholic, and any other Christian fellowship that would come in. We have attendance of around 300 between two services every Sunday morning. We also provide support services in many, many ways. So, the chapel is becoming very much a part of the community, and this addition, we feel, will enhance our ability to minister to the community of Corolla and to the individuals that come in and visit on a regular basis. Like I said, to answer your question, the new plans do call for two additional bathrooms, both of which, I mean, a certain percentage will have to be done on ADA compliant, and so those two bathrooms in themselves will be ADA. Any other questions?
So, the plans that you submitted, this is what you currently want to have it look like?
Yes.
Okay.
We will not in any way disturb the historicity of the chapel that was built in 1885. It will remain the same.
Okay. It is. I, you know, just, you guys have been an amazing breath of fresh air for that, and what you've done there the last few years has been just truly amazing. And when you go by there, there's 200 bicycles sitting out there in some various state of repose, so I imagine you've become quite a bicycle technician at this point in time.
And I retrieved another 30 today from where the students had left them in their rental homes, so. It's quite, I'm the pastor of pedal power.
Alright, any further questions? Thank you very much, we appreciate your time. At this time, I'll open the public comment. I do not have anyone signed up this evening. Would anyone like this comment on this agenda item this evening? Alright, seeing none, I will close. Public comment, period. Any discussion from the board? Alright. Well, I will make a motion to approve PB 19-22, because the request is consistent with the 2006 Land Use Plan, Full Service Destination, and the following policies. Policy CD6, appropriate office and institutional development, such as professional offices, small churches, and individual medical offices, and the like, shall be encouraged to locate as a transitional land use between residential areas and commercial or industrial activities of higher intensity. Policy OB5, Currituck County, through its actions and decisions, shall seek to preserve the historic character and heritage of the Corolla Village area of the Outer Banks. Also, the request is consistent with Corolla Village Small Area Plan, and the following policies. Policy LU1, recognize the uniqueness of the area by maintaining desirable characteristics, such as building style, scale, and architectural features. Policy LU3, future development should be consistent with the future land use map for Corolla Village. And the request is reasonable and in the public interest, because it allows the existing use to continue and be expanded in accordance with the Unified Development Ordinance, and it allows for an increase in community service opportunities for the Corolla Chapel. The conditions of approval are as follows. One, allowable uses of the property shall be limited to the institutional use classification use types, A, religious institution or church, B, childcare center for potential future use, C, after-school programs, also potential future use. Two, prior to construction of the proposed addition shown in the conceptual development plan, the applicant shall submit an application for site plan approval. Three, future development shall conform to the enclosed conceptual plan development or site plan. Four, the proposed addition shall be constructed per the enclosed architectural renderings to promote a style similar to the existing look and feel of the Corolla Village. Five, if the applicant desires to operate a daycare center and/or after-school program, additional review by the TRC is required.
I second that motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Fall in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing non-encouraging, thank you all.
You don't have to leave.
But you can.
I mean, you can.
We understand if you do.
Stay.
Have a safe trip, man.
Thank you. Take care.
I tell my folks that if they're done before I do, they can leave.
Right. Thank you, guys. Next item on the agenda, PB 19-21, Island Development Text Amendment. Guy Lunsford is requesting a text amendment to allow development of islands accessible only by boat. Ms. LaCicero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The staff planner, Temi Glave, who, this was her project, is on vacation today, so I will be making the presentation. A little background for this text amendment, the UDO currently requires new lots have access to North Carolina DOT, maintain roads or road built to NC DOT standards. So, essentially, we do not allow island development, island development, because there is no accessibility for these lots. And even though Mr. Lunsford is asking for a specific, or he has interest in a specific island, if you amend the text of the UDO, this will be for all islands accessible or under our jurisdiction, and that's gonna be 21 privately-owned islands that will be off the Currituck mainland. In 2005, Wayne Mayers submitted a similar text amendment that was denied for the same reasons that we are suggesting denial of this. And the primary reason was the citizen health and safety, and inability to provide adequate county services. And since this text amendment request is so significant, because it would be a shift in policy for the county, because we have not allowed development on islands that accessible only by boat, we did take this through the TRC. Sometimes, text amendments are not reviewed by the TRC, and you received those comments in your agenda packet. So, for your reference, the island that Mr. Lunsford is interested in mostly is Long Point Island, which is here, this is the beginning of the Coin Jock Canal. And in 2000, this is a plat of the, of the current, of the subdivision plat. When this was done in 2017, the island was subdivided into greater-than-10-acre lots. So, by North Carolina general statute, if you're subdividing land into greater-than-10 acres, those lots are exempt from our subdivision regulations. So, what was submitted to the county, and you can find it in your agenda packet, was submitted from Mr. Greg Wills, and he was going to essentially exempt island development, or from being able to have the requirement of meeting the DOT standard for having access to a NC DOT road. So, what staff did, after conferring with the county attorney, that regulating through definitions is probably not the best route to go, we created an entirely new section of our UDO that would take island development through a process, and that is the text amendment that is currently, that is in your, it's in your packet.
This was their suggested text amendment, is that correct? Let's see, the strike-throughs and changes?
Yes, the strike-throughs and the other lines, correct. But it's an entirely new section, sorry, I've turned the page on myself. So, basically, Section 2.4.19 zoning compliance permit, that there will be a disclaimer on the plat, that county service, including but not limited, transportation, emergency services, law enforcement, and fire and rescue are not available at this location. You have to provide a location on the mainland approved by my staff, my office, for staging construction on, for new development on the island. Location either secured through ownership or a written agreement provided to the planning staff and an appropriate zoning district. Provides location on the mainland with boat launch approved by the planning staff for parking of automobiles, boats, trailers, et cetera. And the parking area must be located in appropriate zoning district, surface with asphalt, concrete, brick, crushed stone, pavers, aligned with concrete strips or equivalent material. The materials maintained in a smooth, well-graded condition, compliant with any parking standards, dimensional requirements, and screened on all sides, except the water side with a type-D opaque buffer. The TRC, like I said, this was taken through TRC, and you have those comments in your packet. TRC and Planning Board recommended denial of this. The requested zoning text amendment is not consistent with the 2006 Land Use Plan, because Policy PP2 of the Land Use Plan states that adequate public facilities sufficient to support associated growth and development must be available. Firefighting, emergency medical services, and et cetera will not be available to the island based on TRC comments. Policy ES1 of the Land Use Plan states that new development shall be permitted to locate only in areas where suitable soils and adequate infrastructure is available. The soils indicate Long Point Island is unsuitable for septic systems for a large, a majority of it. It contains Currituck mucky peat, and these types of soils are typical for islands off Currituck mainland. And the request is not reasonable and not in the public interest, because adequate public facilities, firefighting, emergency services, law enforcement, and other county services are not available to an island accessible only by boat. So, unless you have any questions for me?
Is there anything positive from there?
I am sympathetic with Mr. Lunsford, that he wants to, he has this property, and he feels that, you know, he would like to be able to use it, and there are several issues regarding that. And, but, once again, if you, it's not just Long Point Island that we have concern about, it's these 21 other privately-owned islands that are in the Currituck Sound.
Questions for Ms. LaCicero?
Are there any of the islands now, or are there any buildings on any of them?
There are some. I think Swan.
Swan Island.
Swan Island is one with the historic hunting lodge on, but this would be new development, and those are older development before this regulation is in place.
Mr. Chairman, if I can just make one comment.
Of course.
If you all have questions, we do have our chief building inspector here as well, because what you're talking about right now is approval under the zoning ordinance, but even if that is allowed, there are potential building code issues that come up. And so, we do have him in the audience, if you have any questions for him.
I think he should come on up. He looks like he'd be thrilled to come up this evening.
Does the county staff, I know, I mean, we have boats for the sheriff's department and the fire departments have boats, but I, to my knowledge, the county staff doesn't have any, I didn't think so.
So first, do you know how to drive a boat?
I was a cox in the Navy, so.
Right.
Takes some memory into it.
So, what is the stuff we're not seeing, then, from your side of the house?
Some of the things we have to worry about is fire code, water supply for fighting fires, also, there's no means to get there. I think the biggest challenge, I talked to the Department of Insurance, and they said there were some places down south of the state that, they came up with some alternative methods on one island, where they sprinkled the structures, and they staged a brush truck, and they purchased a boat for the fire department to use. I have a little trouble with accepting alternate designs. It's allowed by the code, the problem is, it puts us in a position, I did, about four years ago, I did this with a large event home in Corolla. I required sprinklers and a lot of the life safety stuff that was taken before the Building Co Council got overturned.
Shut it down.
So, it puts, I prefer not to be put in a position to try to figure out alternative methods, how to fight fires, and also put the building inspectors at risk going for boat rides over to an island to do inspections. We'd have to figure out something to do with fees, 'cause it's not just a 15-minute ride over there and do an inspection 15 minutes back, so it's an inconvenience for staff. There are my concerns with it, but the fire code, getting a water supply, how they're gonna do that, and they're 10-acre lots, greater-than-10-acre lots, we're already having a lot of difficulty on the mainland with 10-acre lots and fire code. Now, we're gonna throw an island in the mix, so, there are my concerns.
Okay, thank you. Anything from the board? Thank you. Well, this time, I'll invite the applicant up, or representative, to speak to us.
I'm the good news.
You're the good news? And you are?
Oh, I was getting to that. My name is Guy Lunsford. I'm here joined by my wife, Joanne Lunsford. We're from Burke, Virginia, but we have a house also on 171 Simpson Road in Barco. My wife and I are both Air Force veterans. She spent eight years in the Air Force, I spent 26 years. 10 years of those was at the Pentagon, and so I just have to warn you, Ms. LaCicero said that I'm in charge of the clicker, and someone at the Pentagon in charge of a clicker sometimes can be quite devastating, so. I hope my slides and my points match each other. Before I start, I want to thank Ms. LaCicero's office, even though we disagree on this particular issue, she has been quite helpful in helping us navigate through the application process. So, I thought you'd been very fair about this, and I do appreciate that. So, tonight, what I want to cover is three things. Some about the context under which we approached this text amendment. The second thing is to address in the text amendment the highlighted concerns that you've just been briefed on, and then some other issues that I have detected in the Planning Board and Board of Commission meeting notes that demonstrate maybe other things in the future that are of a concern to some of the planning staff, and so I'm going to address those. I would say that if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them at any time. You're not gonna interrupt my briefing flow to ask your questions. There's a lot of layers to this, so if you're confused about something and you want to clarify a point, just interrupt me and we can, we can get that straight. I'd much rather you understand this than to wait until I get to the end. So, in putting this in context, what I want to mention is that, that in working with Ms. LaCicero, some of the background is just incorrect, and I don't think there's any malice there, I don't think that was deliberate on the part of the planning staff, but having lived in this morass of the Currituck Island LLC for the last 12 years, there are details in there that the planning staff just wasn't aware of. I'm not going to go through an item by item of what is wrong in the background, but it is clear to me that the planning staff has made some of their decisions based on what is in that background. Some of that information is not correct. And I assume that the commissioners will also make their decisions based on information in the background, and so what I would like to do is just walk through some of those things that are most important, and then I defer to the commission how you would like to correct the background. If it's going to be for the record, I have a clean copy with my markups on it that I could give to you in electronic version. If you want to leave it the way it is, I'll let you decide that after you see where some of the corrections are.
I'm not sure about the background of the property being as big a problem as the problems that are existent with lack of services. We can't get an inspector there, we can't get a fire EMS there, police there. I mean, there are a host of other issues that are probably far outweigh whatever's happened with the property over time. Would that be fair to say?
I think that is fair to say. However, some of the things that I would like to correct at the beginning will make more sense when I talk about the constitutionality of this proposal.
Okay.
If you'll allow me.
No, please do, no.
Okay, thank you. So, in 2007, this is when this started, with my wife and myself living up in Virginia, and a friend called us for an investment. And there were five people in this LLC, all in North Carolina, all with different expertise, and they were looking for some new capital in order to, what this LLC had done is bought lunges. had done is bought Long Point Island, they wanted to convert it into five lots and then sell off those lots. We put the money in, turned out to be a huge mistake. As soon as we put that in, some of the LLC members dropped out. And then we got notified by the bank that if we did not make up those payments, we would lose the house in our, in Virginia that we had put up as collateral. So we started making those payments, in the end, all of the other LLC members dropped out. It was just my wife and myself. And then without the background and without the backing of the LLC members, the bank was going to recall the notes. So my wife and I took out a loan against our house and sold out our, a portion of our retirement fund in order to pay off $500,000 in banknotes to Town Bank here in Currituck. The LLC had also purchased that house in Barco, we had to pay off that note, another $200,000, and take out a FEMA loan to replace the bulkhead that was destroyed in this big storm that hit North Carolina a couple of years ago. In 2017, we finally worked with a local lawyer, Tom Nash, to do a deed and lieu foreclosure to move the, the ownership of the island from the LLC to my wife and myself because by that time, the LLC had just dissolved. So there was, there was essentially nothing left. For 12 years while we were involved in this project, many different real estate agents were used trying to find many different purposes for this island. And all of that had failed. It became apparent after 12 years that unless we can advertise this island and give assurances to a potential buyer that they can build a home on there, providing they go through all the permitting process that is required, then if we can't provide that assurance, that property is essentially worthless.
When you, when you purchased this property, was it an allowable, you used to have homes built on it at that time?
No, sir.
Okay.
And, and this is one of the things that I think is important to correct. Let me see if I'm there yet. So, so here are some of the corrections. It, it is true that the, that the island is divided into five lots, 10 acres each. What's not true is that my wife and I have any interest in developing that island. The LLC had already divided that island into five lots before we even came on board in 2007. And all of the research that I've done, even though you see an engineering diagram, you see that blue line because one of the LLC members was an engineer. But there was no actual detailed work citing those five lots and no work done to, to, to establish that a house could even be put on any of those five lots. And, and later we'll talk about the health department from, from Currituck County coming out and saying you could only put as mo, at most, three houses out there. So my wife and I have no interest in developing this. Um, we're not real estate brokers, we're not investors, we're not lot turners, we're not any of that. Um, our interest is to sell the island and the Barco house together in one package. But without the assurance provided to somebody that they can buy that property and put a house out there, again, the, the property is worthless. So, but what I want to make clear to the board is that approving this text amendment only allows someone the permission to go forward with the building process. All of the other permits, all the CAMA requirements, everything related to septic tanks, everything related to fire code, all of that still has to be permitted before they could build on the island. This just gives them the permission to go forward with the process. It gives them no absolute unencumbered right to build on the island.
Well, I mean, but that's going to give like false hope to someone then thinking that they're not going to get it, I mean.
Almost similar to the situation you were placed in, where you probably were sold a bill of goods, that clearly was not the case.
I, I, I take your point that I was sold a bill of goods.
Right.
But at that point, the, the people who owned the LLC were still making presentations to the board to get it approved for building, so there was no guarantee that, that that was even going to be approved. And I take your point about giving false hope. I, I don't intend to give false hope. All I'm going to do is tell somebody that there are provisions under the UDO that allow you to petition to build on the island, but no guarantees that they will be approved. But that is better, I mean, that's better than where we are now. See if I can get this to work. So here's the background that was abbreviated, um, from Ms. LaCicero. So there was a text amendment offered in 2005. This was done by Mr. Myers. He did not own the property, he had a, an option to buy the property, and I think what he was doing is, is what you have suggested. He was trying to find out if this was even a possibility. When he presented the text amendment to the planning staff, there were three issues that they were looking at. They were looking at, um, the lack of availability of, of county services, the lack of public utilities, and no method for disposing of solid waste. According to the many, meeting minutes, Mr. Myers addressed the staff by stating the public utilities and waste disposal would be addressed in the permitting process, and the future residents of the island would sign a waiver relieving the county of any responsibilities for providing county services to the island. Following that explanation, the text amendment was approved by the Planning Board in 2005. The text amendment was placed before the Board of Commissioners in 2005 on three occasions. On the first occasion, the board asked some questions, then they deferred the vote. On the second occasion and the third occasion, the item was placed on the agenda for the Board of Commissioners and then withdrawn without explanation. So it was never reviewed again in 2005. In 2006, Currituck LLC was formed and they purchased the property subdivided into five 10 acre lots and began paying property tax on those lots. In 2007, the Currituck Island LLC presented a revised text amendment to the Planning Board. It, it included, the Planning Board had the same problems. We can't provide public services, um, we can't provide public utilities, and we don't know what you're going to do about waste disposal. And then there was a fourth issue raised, and that was, even if they not, are not obligated to provide county services, or if they can't provide county services, there was a question of liability. Is the county liable to provide those services? The Planning Board met in November of 2007, they raised these questions, the vote was deferred until December of 2007, when the county attorney showed up and they addressed these concerns. All of the issues that were raised by the Planning Board were answered to the satisfaction of the Planning Board, and once again, the Planning Board approved the text amendment in 2007. In 2008, the, the, the text amendment was presented to the Board of Commissioners and in a split vote, it was voted down. The, the Board of Commissioner minutes do not indicate why it was voted down, only that it was. And, and while the Board of Commissioners didn't indicate why they refused the text amendment, in all the research that I've been doing and reading the minutes and other comments and talking to other people, it looked like there were four reasons that were of a concern to the Board Commission. Not trying to speak for them, but this is what I've deemed from my, my, or gleaned from my research. And that is the same issue regarding county liability, is, is the county liable for providing services? How would the county even provide those services? Are they requirement under the land use plan? And two other issues, what is going to be done about long-term parking? And what would be done in the staging of the material in the building process? Each of those issues are now addressed in the text amendment. It looks like there might be a little bit of a word change between what I have and what Ms. LaCicero, um, presented, but essentially the, the text is, is the same. So at the 2007 Planning Board meeting, the county attorney took this position that the county is not liable at all for providing public services such as police, fire, EMS, et cetera, to a house on the island. So they're not liable at all, but in order to make that clear, the county attorney suggested that a statement be included, both in the permitting process and on the plan. And you saw that statement in Ms. LaCicero's slide. And it is in the border, and it's in the text amendment.
While we're talking about 2007, would you feel that statement is true today? Or, oh, well, ask the county attorney while we're tackling that.
Okay.
That was me back then.
That was you back then?
Yeah.
Okay. So, you still feel the same way today?
I did not feel the county would be liable for the provision of public services to an inaccessible piece of property.
Okay.
The text amendment? Oops, sorry. And, I didn't realize the county attorney was here. This is what I took from the, the minutes of the county attorney's, uh, comments in The text amendment, as Ms. LaCicero pointed out, includes creating a new section, um, in the UDO, zoning compliance permit island development. And in section D1, it adopts the language that was proposed by the county attorney. And a similar statement would be added to the plan. In section D2 of this, of the same area, this is, the, the language that I had, it's a little bit incorrect now because there was a parentheses talking about secured through ownership or written agreement, but it says essentially the same thing, um, that, that construction material either has to be, the location has to be secured through private ownership or rich, written agreement with the planning director. And then regarding parking, I would suggest adding a, a, an additional phrase, security either through private ownership, to mirror what is, is in the, the previous section. So that if, as we envision, you own a house in Barco, which is near Long Point Island, and you also own the island and you're going to build on it, that because that's a private residence and it has two garages, that you could park your, your boat and your trailer in those, in your own garages. And, and therefore, there would be no requirement for having to meet the, the public requirements for a parking lot, since this would not be a parking lot.
Let me just hold you up, Ms. Lunsford. Um, Ms. LaCicero, is that, would that even be an allowed, you used to have an off-site parking lot currently?
In a certain zoning district, not in like single-family mainland. Now, if someone had their, their house on the mainland and they had, were going to park their car there and take the boat over to Long Point Island.
That's certainly fine. I'm, I'm just thinking, I'd say everyone on the property, if this island were allowed to be developed, um, no one else, that was their primary residence and they had to park a boat, so they would have to find a commercial, or GB or something like that to have a lot for the owners to go to park their vehicles in and then launch a boat.
Yes. And, and leave the vehicles parked for whatever time period that they're going to be on the island, yes.
Well, and, and just to piggyback on that, I know you, for boat access, but I've seen that canal with 12 inches of foot of ice for a long period of time, so you're not going to use a boat across that canal a lot of times.
And, and I don't dispute any of that. The only point I'm making is that, that there is a, a possible scenario where the person buys both the island.
Right.
And the Barco house, and that he has it for his own personal use, and so he's just going to park his cars where they always get parked, which is on, and, and if the situation is different, in consultation with the planning director, then they would have to go out and, and find a public place to park if it wasn't his residence.
And that's, that, there analyzed the problem. We're, we're responsible for the bigger picture, and now you, you maybe not are the developer, but another developer comes in, where do they put the cars? Where, I mean, someone comes in to buy this piece of property, how do they get back and forth? And they shouldn't have to have that answer themselves. I think it should be presented to them, hey, we have secured property, are there fees or dues or whatever, if there's a PUD or, or HOA or, or anything like that, um, then that, that is a, a big concern, and I raised that with, um, your attorney Greg Wills, that, um, that they, that the property would have to be secured and maintained by the neighborhood association for off-site parking, storage of boats, trailers, whatever else needs to happen for the residents there. And, and that, and that continues. So it's not only your island, it would be all 21 of these islands, you know, all these factors have to come into play for every single instance where this would be an allowed use.
But I would think if it's attached to that, that all of that specified, if they can't meet that criteria, they're not going to be putting a structure on there.
Right.
So I, you know, you're right, it's for all 21 islands, but clearly if the requirements are established, they either make them, or they meet the requirements and they can do it, or they don't meet the requirements, in which case they're prohibited.
Right, and they can't, but, right.
If, if my memory serves me correct, of those 21 islands, there's only maybe five that could be.
Reasonable.
Reasonable enough to have something put on. Because I was on the Board of Commissioners when this came forward, and I remember it very well.
Okay.
I was just going to page through real quick some, some pictures, just because it's, it's easier to grasp this. But here is Long Point Island and the location of the Barco house, less than a mile away. This is in the back of my lot, looking at Long Point Island, gives you an idea how close it is. This is the lot itself. Um, in the middle is the house, there's an attached garage. And then in the back, there is a commercial facility that used to be an old crab shedder, not operational anymore. There's also a, a garage back there, and then there's a picture of the boat ramp. So this is an unattached garage that's next to the shedder, this is the attached garage, and this is the boat ramp. So if you live there and you own the island, clearly, I mean, you just launch your boat there and you go to the island.
So would your theory be that, um, each, each, each property owner on the island would also be a property owner or have access to this home to park?
No, sir. Well, as I, as I said earlier, our only interest is to sell the island and the, the Barco property as a single transaction and, and not advertise that it's divided into five lots, or three lots, or any number of lots, just to sell the island.
Got it.
You know, we, our bottom line is, we have all this money at risk and we're trying to recoup some of it. What the person does with the island, you know, we, what we're trying to do is, is show them the advantage of having that island, build a single home out there, and then own this property, which could be a place where they can launch their boat and either live on the property or live on the island. So, um, what I tried to show here is, is a way to address, address the specific issues that were raised by the Planning Board for the denial, that could be addressed by a text amendment. Now, there are other things that they have addressed, which can't really be solved with a text amendment, so it just requires some thinking on what are the issues? And, and are they, are they real issues? Are they issues that, uh, while you could discuss in theory and practice, aren't really a problem? And that's, that's what I want to come through here. These are the additional concerns that were raised, um, and they deal more with something in the future. So one of the concerns was, all right, let's say we sign the waiver and it's on the plan, and now you have somebody on the house and they call 911 anyway, what's going to happen? These are, are reoccurring themes from both the TRC and the Planning Board. Another one was this, this comment about 21 islands. You know, what happens now, you've opened this up to 21 islands, what happens now to the, the stress on the county if people are going to try and build on 21 islands? What is the cost and the logistics of getting inspectors back and forth to the island? And then the citizen health and safety issue. So what I did to try and address this, being a total outsider from Virginia, feeling like, you know, I'm coming from the outside, talking to you about your own properties, so, um, but what I did is I just went on Google Earth Pro and I looked around, I said, well, okay, they're concerned about these things that might happen in the future, is there any way to test that? Can I, can I either prove or disprove those, those hypotheses? So I looked around and what I found in Dare County is there are a lot of houses with islands. So I reached out to Dare County, I talked to some of the planning people there, I talked to Donna Creef and Bobby, I'm sorry, I, I exchanged emails with Donna and Bobby Alden, and then I had a, a long conversation with Noah Gillum, all from their planning shop. Now, I recognize that Dare County and Currituck County are managed differently, and so this Now, I recognize that Dare County and Kurutuck County are managed differently, and so this, this conversation is not about how they're managed. This conversation is about, here is the planning staff that says, we see these potential problems in the future, and as a result of that, we're going to deny your request. It's not the sole reason, but it, it's part of a mitigating set of reasons. And what I was trying to do is say, well, are those, are those conjectures realistic or not? So I talked to someone who actually lives that every day, and I talked to the TRC members, and we discussed these houses. Here is a house on Herring Shoal, here's a house on Little Tim Island, it's a single family. Here's an island that has not yet been identified, at least the county planners said they don't have a name for it yet, but there's a house there. And here's a house on Duck Island in Dare County. All of these are single families. And here is what the county planners told me down there, that they have 13 houses on 10 different islands, that dealing has been relatively positive, and that they have no unique building requirements for those houses. As long as they follow everything that is in the Dare County UDO, and get all of the requisite permits, federal, state, and county permits, they're allowed to build on the island. There is no specific additional requirement levied on them because they're doing this on an island. There are no waivers required for public services. I'm not arguing that we shouldn't have one here. If the county would like a waiver for a public service, you know, it's okay with me if that helps get the job done. There are also no prohibitions about where they park. Again, I'm not trying to argue we don't have a prohibition here, if the county wants to do that, then we can do that. I'm just saying that here's Dare County that has lived with this for 33 years, and they have no prohibition about parking unless there happens to be a different reason why you can't park there for a long term. If, if somebody owns that parking lot and they say no long-term parking, then obviously no long-term parking. But as the process of building, they don't, they don't require the builder to produce evidence that he knows where he's going to park. More to the points that were raised, let me make sure I'm on the right hand. More to the points raised by the, by the planners, this is directly from the planners at Dare County, in 33 years, they can't recall a single 911 call from an island. Never a response request for police, fire, nothing. There have been no explosions in the building on islands, they have 10 islands, 13 houses on 10 different islands, but they have plenty of islands that are on the market right now with for-sale signs on them, and nobody's buying them. In fact, they've only had five houses built on their islands in the last 20 years, the latest one being 1913.
1913?
I'm sorry, 2013, sorry about that, thank you for picking that up.
Yeah, that's probably why.
A really old building. Although I found one down in Carteret County that was built in the late 1800s on islands. So there are still plenty of islands on the market down there in Dare County. And so this statement from the planning commission, I mean, I'm sorry, the planning board, that says, yes, if you do this text amendment, it will apply to all 21 islands, that is a true statement. But the implication I get from the way that it's phrased is that that's a bad thing. And what I'm saying is that if you could point to the experience from Dare County, you'd say, even if it is opened up to all 21 islands, and I agree with, with Chairman, Councilman Etheridge, that there aren't, there isn't the evidence that the 21 islands are even buildable out there. But even if they were all buildable, there is no evidence that there'd be this big rush to sell, to buy those islands. I mean, I would, I would like somebody to buy one island, that's all. I'd like there to be a rush to do that. So I don't know if 21 is, is the correct number, but when I did a Google search, or Google Pro look at all of Kurutuck County, I found some islands that already have houses on them, some of these islands have already been committed to wildlife refuge and therefore aren't buildable, and some of these islands are in such condition that you can't build on them. And so there might be 21 islands out there, there may be 22, might be more, might be less. I'm just saying that, that even if there are islands out there, a person can't go out there and build on it necessarily. And if they did, you know, the points I'm going to make later is, I believe that it is reasonable, and it is in the public interest to allow this building to go forward, but The last thing I want to point out here is that in the building process for Dare County, they do require the builder to absorb all of the expenses related to getting any inspectors out to the island. That is part of their process. So I take the point that, that this is a little bit of a stretch on resources, but it is the builder who's responsible for getting the inspectors out there. And according to the people I talked to at Dare County, it's not a problem, the inspectors are willing to do that, as long as somebody's paying their bills. The planning staff also referenced this, this phrase, which I quote because it was in the TRC notes, significant concerns with regard to citizen health and safety. To be honest, I don't know where this is coming from, because there's not a real explanation in the TRC minutes, except to, except to go back to this quote that they're saying, there's no fire and rescue available. But I don't find any statement in, in either the UDO or the land use plan that specifically addresses the citizens' health and safety. And I don't find anything in the Board of Commissioners minutes, nor the planning board minutes, on this issue that talks about health and safety issues. I'm not saying they don't exist, I'm just not sure where the statement is coming from, that this is a significant concern. And because of the statement from Dare County, that in 33 years, they have no history of anybody calling for help at the island, the conclusion I got from one of the planners was, the citizens seem to have no greater risk of health and safety living on an island than they do on the mainland.
That statement, I think, is intellectually dishonest. In that, if you fall down the stairs on the mainland, I'm going to be able to get an ambulance to you.
True.
In an expeditious manner. If you fall down the stairs on an island, you could potentially die at the base of those stairs.
I don't dispute.
So I, I do not think that that, I mean, you're doing a great job, but that, that, you cannot make that assertion whatsoever, and, and any individual with Dare County planning staff that indicated that. Now, they may say, they may be correct, and they've never had a 911 call, I get it, but some of those deserted houses, maybe they would have called 911, and we just haven't found them yet.
No, I take the point, I don't disagree with that. But as I'll get to later in some more conversation, that, that is no less true than someone who takes a boat and goes out for the weekend. You know, if I have a boat, this is not regulated, if I have a boat in Dare County, Kurutuck County, and I want to take a couple guys, and I want to go out for the weekend fishing, and I want to sleep on the boat, that's not regulated, somebody, although I would think that would be more risky than going off to an island.
That's also not an accurate statement. In that, if you and your buddies want to get together and tie one on, on your island house, you're more than allowed to do that. You do it on that boat, and wildlife comes up, there's going to be a problem.
Okay.
So.
And the sheriff.
And the sheriff department, and, right, yeah.
Okay, in, in that one instance, but if they're just going out to fish, and they decide to spend the night.
Your place doesn't move where the boat does.
Yeah.
And we're entering duck season, so we're all prepped already.
Mr. McCree, didn't we just go through an exercise on 10-acre lots and fire protection and fire flows, and is there not some state requirement that those, houses be able to meet those fire flow requirements, or something? Just refresh my memory, because it's.
Yes, I mean, this, this, the North Carolina State Building Code has a fire code, which has been particularly impressed upon Kurutuck County by the Office of State Fire Marshal, that there must be sufficient fire flow to meet fire code requirements. Building inspectors, chief inspectors, is more than two lots, is that?
Yes.
So the practice currently, under that interpretation from the Office of State Fire Marshal, is that we issue building permits on 10-acre exempt lots, up to two, and over two, there must be a showing that there is the fire flow capacity to meet the building code requirements.
Okay, so potentially, the island could have two homes on it, if this measure were passed.
Or a pond.
Or a pond, but you can't get.
No, if it has two or less, there's no requirement.
Correct.
Right. There would not be the, I think that's right, that would not, we would not be, the fire code would not be applicable.
Right, right.
In that instance, for, for two or less.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just one point of clarification, and I appreciate the research that the applicant has done with Dare County. One thing that we've run into time and again, is that there are a lot of counties in North Carolina who are not properly applying the fire code. The issue is, we have documentation in writing from the Office of the State Fire Marshal very clearly telling us that we are doing it the correct way. And so I'm not arguing that Dare County might not view it that way, but the state has told us that we are applying it correctly.
Well, the most, he, assuming his stats are correct, the most they have are two houses on one island, exempt from the fire code.
Right, that was my point, I knew there was some point in there, so, thank you. Please continue, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir. So, again, in my Google search, this is what I found, there are some, some islands in Kurutuck County, you must be more familiar with them than I am, but Pine Island Hunt Club has, has houses on it, I found this on Narrows Island, and then the one on Swan Island, I found one on Monkey Island, but, but it is pretty well demolished, and they've turned that into wildlife refuge, so I don't, I don't think that's a good judge. And, and I'm not saying these are illustrative of buildings, or that maybe these were built before the particular UDO was in place and these codes were in place, just saying that these islands are out there, they have houses, I'm not sure how they're managed, but it might enlighten the, the staff on, on how Kurutuck is dealing with its current county islands.
Can I make a point of clarification, that Pine Island is accessible by Water Lily Road?
Yep, and Swan Island's been there a very long time.
It says the Narrow Islands.
Narrow, yep.
You can get that by, by a car.
So there is a final group of statements that I want to address, and that is the statement of consistency and reasonableness. Different versions of, of these statements of consistency and reasonableness that deal with the ability or the inability to provide emergency services, and this environmental issue about the type of land that's on Kurutuck. That shows up in many different forms, in all of the meetings and in all the objections. But before I address that, I'd just like to offer something to the board as, as kind of an outside observer, to, over the last several weeks to months, reading over these documents in great detail. And that is, and I hope I'm getting this across right, the reason I think we have such a challenge with the text amendment, is that the land use plan and the UDO are not designed to support building on an island. And so what we're trying to do, we collectively, in, in addressing this issue, what we're trying to do is take a, a building question, can you build on an island, and take something that's designed not to handle that, and kind of force-fit it into the island scenario. And because it doesn't fit, that's why we end up with some of these challenges. So, so while all of this construction that's going on in the Moyawak Master Plan, there are a lot of rules there about how much setback you have to have, and where the roads can go, how many entrances you get into the parking lot, none of that is really applicable to a single island being built by itself, I mean, a single home being built on an island. And so I think that becomes a challenge then, how do you take the existing UDO and the existing land use plan, and, and make that applicable to an island, when every time you turn around, the island doesn't fit? And so now we're trying to, to find some way to amend the UDO in order to allow that to fit.
Which I will, I'll say, we do all the time.
Okay.
The developer sitting right behind you, we amended it to allow him to do a subdivision.
Right.
And so we, we are able to do that, and I think a question I have is, okay, let's say we, we grant you permission this evening, we change the UDO to allow for this, and this island doesn't, the soils on it aren't good for septic, so you can't build on it anyway. We kind of set the staff up to do a whole bunch of work, knowing that it can't succeed. And, and the question is, is that fair to do to our county staff, to, to take their time, the time away from other projects, to do something they know that, that possibly can't succeed, and more than likely will not be able to be built on?
If you give me two minutes, I'll answer that question.
Okay.
So the only thing that I, Ed, when I went back and looked at the Dare County UDO, if you see in this, this third tick down, Dare County, and I'm not trying to say you should match Dare County, or that they should match you, I'm just saying that, that to highlight this statement, if you look at Dare County, they're geographically divided, and their description includes a stretch of islands. So they've encompassed the islands in their UDO and their land use plan, which then allows them to have these islands being built consistent with what their, what their plan is. In the Kurutuck County land use plan, you say it's divided into three subareas, and I list the subareas here, I don't need to tell you what they are, you know what they are, but there's no mention of the islands. And in all of the charts and graphs and, that I've seen, both in the current Kurutuck growth patterns and the projections out to 2040, there's, there's, everything in there centers on these three areas, they don't do anything with islands, with this one exception. And it's this one here, it is the policy statement in paragraph, in Section 7, Paragraph 6.6 of the land use plan, where the goal is a development of islands that would best promote the public interest in Kurutuck County, and the strategy is to allow island development that complies with the country, county's zoning regulations. And an interesting note is, it was written in 2006, I don't know the status of the current state of play, but in the implementation, it says there's been no development since the writing of the land use plan. And it may be that the reason for that is, there aren't really any provisions in the UDO to develop an island. But, but what this text amendment does, on a broader scale, not just freeing up my island so that I can try to sell it, what the text amendment does, it allows then a link between the land use plan and the UDO, for this one policy statement, that says, now we have a way to move from the land use plan, which gives us this policy statement, which says we want to develop islands if they're in the public interest, and comply with zoning regulations, and we want to move that into the UDO, and now we have a text amendment that allows us to do that. If that's the case, then the question is, how do we handle public interest? Is developing the island in the public interest? And I have a couple thoughts on that, as you might imagine. It increases the property tax base, I would say that's in the public interest. And if you use Dare County as kind of a model for what is the demand on the county, and that there is very little demand on the county, or less demand, let's say, let's say if there was an equation between a house and the comparable demand on a county, that a house built on the island would be less of a demand on the county, because there's no requirements for fire and rescue, there's no requirement for school buses, no requirements for patrolling, patrolling police. So, so I think it's a net gain for the county to allow island development, because for myself, that would increase the property tax by fourfold, if somebody built on that island, and yet there would not be a commensurate increase in the demand for county services. So you could take that money and put it someplace else. The other thing that's in public interest, I think, is, is the economic demand that that creates for local construction, if someone's going to build on an island. Building on an island is not going to be cheap, million dollars at least, maybe a million and a half, to build on an island. All that, all that new work has to come from someplace, it comes from Kurutuck County, mostly, let's hope. But wherever it comes from, building a, a house on an island does stimulate the economy. So I would say. So I would say that we meet the, we can, if we choose, we can decide that it is in the public interest to adopt the text amendment to allow this bridging to take place between the land use plan and the UDO. And the zoning regulations, as we said, there aren't any, but the text amendment would now allow that, so it would be consistent with that portion of 6.6 in the strategy to allow development that complies with the zoning plan. So, right now, there is no zoning requirements, nor zoning compliance for island building because it just doesn't exist, but this text amendment would allow that to happen. And you decide, as important as it might be or might not be, to fulfill the requirements in the land use plan for paragraph 6.6, is that important or not? If not, if it is, this might be a way to do that. So, now to the specific objections in the Statement of Consistency and Reasonableness, policy PP2 of the land use plan, adequate facilities, firefighting, et cetera. I have trouble with this argument as I go through it, because here's what I'm hearing. A, the policy statement is, we have to be able to provide public facilities, in this case, fire, rescue, police, sufficient to support growth. Island is growth. We can't provide services there, and therefore, even though the island is not asking for those services, the fact that we still can't provide them means we need to deny the text amendment.
Well, I think as a policy, this county wants to ensure the health and safety of its citizens, and that's probably why that made it in there. And it's why it weighs so heavily on us. We have that broader responsibility to be answerable to our citizens.
I don't disagree with that. But if the citizens are prepared to say they can handle it without the help of the county in these areas, and if we say that the only experience that we can draw on, and there are other counties, we could look at other counties, but if the county neighbor to us says in 33 years they've never asked us for that, then maybe the question is, how much jeopardy do you really put the citizens in by allowing them to build on the island? I mean, this island building is not for anybody. It's a, you know, a different sort of person, a different kind of mindset that wants the isolation of living on an island. And if they want to move out there, it's like if you look at these things on Buying Alaska, or the Outer Banks, or the outside of Alaska, where people are totally cut off from the world, there's just this population of people who like that. There are people who bungee jump, there are people who cliff dive. You know, I'm not sure I would do any of that, but we don't try to regulate all of that. We just provide the best environment we can, and if a citizen makes an independent decision that says, all that notwithstanding, I'm still going to do this, at some point, the county has to say, okay, in this country, you get to make your own decisions. After you've taken everything else into consideration, you get to decide, and if there are consequences, you get to live with them. And then we just let them go.
And I think that, to me, is a fundamental aspect of freedom, in that it's not a surprise to you that you bought a house or built a house on an island. It's not like you woke up one morning and went, oh, the bridge is gone. I think that, you know, you're right. There is a mentality associated with that that's not for everyone. And, you know, it comes with pitfalls, it comes with risk, but ultimately, it's your decision, and, you know, I see your point, and, you know, you're right. Island living's not for everyone, just like living in Kirtuk's not for everyone, because you go anywhere, it's a drive typically.
So, it's still up to the board to decide, but the planning board, and, I mean, the commission to decide, but the planning board and I disagree on whether you're fulfilling the requirements of the land use plan, this PP2. I say you're fulfilling the requirements because of this, there are no requirements to fulfill, and therefore, you meet that obligation. So I took a stab at that. I looked at the land use plan, it says adequate public facilities sufficient to support growth. What do you mean by adequate? How do I know when I'm doing that? If you go to someone in Moyoc, and you go to a town center there, and you say, what do you believe is adequate for public facilities? They might say, well, I expect police to be around when I call, I expect there to be a fire department, I expect 911 service, I expect a school bus to pick up my kids, I expect this and this and this. These are all of my expectations, and the county says, those are good requirements, and we're going to fulfill those, and the guy says, now I feel like you're providing adequate public facilities. Now you go to a guy on an island and say, what do you want from us? What is he going to say? I don't want anything from you, I want to be left alone. So now you go back to the county and say, what are your requirements to provide nothing to that guy on the island? Isn't the answer nothing? And if you say the answer is nothing, then I think you fulfill this obligation under the land use plan, that you're sufficient to meet the demand. So here's what I say, is the argument, that if you look at the Oxford Dictionary, how much is adequate? Enough to meet the requirement. If the land resident says, I have no requirement for emergency services, and by requirement, I don't mean he might fall down the steps and hurt himself, and now he needs something, I'm saying that I don't, living on this island, I don't have any requirements that I expect from the state. Okay, so I'm talking about it in those broad terms, not about something happens tomorrow and now he has a requirement to...
So, let me ask this, so then why should they even pay taxes?
Well...
Could that not open a can of worms? Well, I'm not getting any service, so therefore I should not pay property taxes. That's a logical progression for me. You're not requiring me to do anything, so why should I pay for anything? Wouldn't that open a can of worms?
I can't argue that. I will just say this, I've been paying taxes on it for 12 years, and I have never asked the county, why I have this island out here, and I'm paying $1,200 a year for taxes on it, and I get no services. Except now I'm here before this body.
And I don't think the county forced you to buy it either. Ain't nothing fair about taxes.
Yeah.
To quote Dan.
So I'm just saying that there's another way to look at that, defining what is adequate and what is the responsibility for providing services. And now, this, it took more than two minutes, and I'm sorry for that.
That's okay. You're making a very compelling argument, nothing else for being entertained.
I want to get to this environmental statement. So the top part is the environmental statement from the land use plan, the bottom part is the comments from one of the planning staffers, is that right, Mrs. Sisarow? I don't know who made the comment, so, the one that talked about the soil?
Yes, the staff planner.
From the staff, okay, okay.
Right, that was from TRC.
Okay, so here's what I'd say about this. I've been out to the island, I've walked around, spent a lot of time out there, and I'm just telling you, I don't know where he gets this, but I looked at the soil map, and the etchings on the soil map for Long Point Island is the same etchings that they have on Pine Island, and I know they build on Pine Island. So I'm saying that the soil maps might be broad and not all-encompassing, but I have been on that island, and I've walked around, and I've walked uphill to the three areas where there are mature trees, and I've walked on that soil, and that soil looks like regular topsoil to me, it's certainly not marshy land. There is some marshy land on the corners, on the edges, but there is sufficient land there that I think you could build. This is what I'm talking about.
And I think that goes back to the, let it get approved, right? Whoever wants to build a house, just like, I mean, there's plenty of lots in Kirtuk County that don't, that you need to do above and beyond when it comes to a septic system, because the soil type will not support it. And so, you know, buyer beware, right? You buy the lot, and you can't put in a septic system, then...
And this is the point that I would offer to you, which is exactly what you're saying here, and that is, in the past, when this issue was raised with the planning board, they agreed that this was an issue not for the text amendment, where we're not giving anybody the right to build, but it's more an issue for the permitting process. So this doesn't give permission for someone to build, or say, yes, we agree or don't agree, there's a septic ability to put septic tank there. I think the concern is misplaced. But if you don't believe it's misplaced, then I would tell you that I've been out there, and there is some high ground, and it's not all marshy ground. Here are some pictures from Long Point Island, you can see there's a sandy beach there, there's trees in the background, that point is where I landed and walked up there. You have to walk uphill into those mature forests over there. This is where the old lighthouse used to be that was out on that island. And I bring this up again because the next two slides, and they're not very good here, but they are good in your planning package on page 65 and 66, but these three areas where you see all the trees, those are the exact three areas where a county inspector came out and cited in his drawing, these are three places where I could put septic tanks. Exact same places, and this is where I would argue, that you can walk uphill and you can find these places with soil. Now, I'll say this about the septic tanks, the letter is very old, 1990. So I called the county, talked to the health department, actually found the guy who replaced the guy who signed the letter, Kevin Carver. Kevin says, what's your question? I said, I've got this island, I'm just curious about septic tank, can I put a septic tank out there? And he said, well, this is an old letter, I'd have to go out and re-inspect. And I said, what is the requirements for septic tanks? How have they changed in the last 30 years? He said, I'll tell you this, septic tank requirements are much more stringent now than they used to be in 19, 30 years ago, in 1990, when that letter was signed, but the technology on how to put in and operate a septic tank has also significantly improved in the last 30 years. So I said, Kevin, I'm going to the Board of Commissioners, I do not want to misspeak, I don't want to misrepresent you, what can you tell me at this point in time? He says, I can't tell you whether I can give you a permit to put a septic tank there or not. I can tell you this, if you have a letter that was signed by an inspector on our letter head that says you can put three septic tanks there, unless there's been significant erosion, I think there at least is a good possibility that you could put, I could find you a place for a septic tank in this environment. But, short of actually booking the inspection and me going out there, I can't answer that question for you, and by the way, if I have to do that, you have to pay for my travel. So I said, well, I have a provision for that, so...
Mrs. Sisarow, what was this property zone?
SFM, single-family mainly.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Luntford, I'm going to pause you right there and take a brief five-minute recess.
Okay.
I'm going to stretch my legs. All right, now I'll call the Board of Commissioners back into order. Sorry to pause you there, I hope I hit a good pause point for you.
No, sir, it was fine.
Please continue, sir.
I'm sorry it took so long.
That's all right.
I said there's a lot of layers here. So the last statement, we really have talked about this at length, so I don't have to go too much detail, but the last statement made in the Statement of Consistency and Reasonableness is that the request is not reasonable and not in the public interest. And the reason cited for that has to, again, do with the inability to provide public services. I would say that it is reasonable, and it is in the public interest. That should be no surprise to you at this point, but these are the reasons that we discussed already, that it takes a certain kind of person to live out on an island. People are looking for a particular lifestyle. I take the points that are made, maybe it is a little more risky, so I'll disregard that and say this, that yes, it might be risky, but that is consistent with the lifestyle of someone who wants to live a solitude life. And I think the right point is made, that if you, you don't just wake up one day and say, how in the world did I ever end up living on an island? But what you do is you make a decision, and then you say, well, here are the consequences. You're not going to get any help, you're out there by yourself, and the guy says, perfect, exactly what I want. And so I'd say it is reasonable. It's reasonable like this, in all this research, I talked to a guy who has a friend who owns a house on an island nearby. And I said, why do you do that? What's the deal here? And he said, I'll tell you why we do it. He owns that house, and he and I and some other friends of ours, we go out there every weekend. We fish, we play cards, we have a good time, we chill out, and then we come back on Sunday and we go back to work refreshed. And that's the only thing that we use that house for. Now, to me, that seems reasonable, I mean, I'd like to join that club, and go out there and fish and play cards for the weekend on an island that's secluded and, you know, nothing else to do. But for him, that's perfectly reasonable, and so I'm not sure it's right to say that whole idea of living on an island is not reasonable. And we've already discussed the tax benefits and the stimulation of the economy of why this could be considered to be in the public interest. So I accept the statement, I just, I accept the positive version of that, not the negative side. Now I want to talk about just one more issue, and it's not raised by the staff at all, except one time in a planning meeting, when it's recorded in the minutes, this statement, that I have in quotes. So here's where I am on this. I looked at that statement, and I said, what does that really mean? So I started doing some research on it, and I think what he was referring to is the concept of inverse condemnation as it relates to the Fifth Amendment. And here's how I understand this now, that my wife and I have been paying property tax on the island, first through the LLC and then by ourselves for the last 10 years. It wasn't the fault of the planning board or the commissioners that we got into this mess, wasn't their fault that we put all that money in, wasn't their fault that we mortgaged the house, sold part of our retirement plan, and are now down here in front of you. That's all on us. And that's what Commissioner Beaumont was saying. In a free enterprise system, you take responsibility for your action. We're taking responsibility for this action. We did all this, nobody's fault but ours, and now we're trying to figure out a solution. But look at this statement. There seems to be some parallels here, that while we take responsibility for this action all on our own, we have no control over this next outcome. It's the commission that has the total control here about whether or not you allow the text amendment to go forward in order to at least put us in a position where we could provide an assurance to a potential buyer that with full knowledge and full acceptance of the risk, that he wants to buy the island and go through the entire permitting process, not own risk in its own right, but if he wants to go through that whole process in order to live on that particular island. Okay? That's what the commission is being asked now. Will you allow us to exercise our rights for property that we own?
So, brief interruption.
Yes.
So I served on the Board of Adjustments for a little over seven years, and part of, one of the things that we looked at with property was, in property rights, was can you make reasonable use of the property? And that was one of the elements that we used, whether to grant a waiver or, you know, some other conveyance to the individuals. And it was a rude day when we woke up and said, that a reasonable use of your property does not mean you get to do whatever you want to do on that piece of property.
Accept it, yes.
And I'll give you an example. Reasonable use of Long Island is a place I can beach my boat and go out and fish on the shoreline. That could be considered reasonable use of the property. In other words, the county's not preventing you from doing what's always been done out there, with the exception of lighthouse, and that's reasonable use of your property. So, when you say the ability to build a home, there are many lots in this county that you're not going to build a home on. And it has nothing to do with your constitutional rights, it has everything to do with, it is not a compatible, or it is not a, it is a, it's a non-conforming lot, and hence, you can't, so...
Nope, I take all those points, and that's why at the beginning, I wanted to go through that, putting this in context, to let you know for 12 years, we worked through, I don't know, six, eight, 12 different real estate agents, trying to find some way to use this property that doesn't involve building a house on it. Solar, wind, recreational, duck hunting. You know, I went to a local lawyer here and asked about duck hunting, he says, you're not going to duck hunt out there. People with a lot more money than you have tried. But because of the way the regulations are written... But because of the way the regulations are written, this was Starkey? Starkey Sharp? He seemed like a colorful guy to me. We got along real well. But anyway, he says, "There's no way. People with a lot more money than you have tried to put more blinds out there, and you're just not going to do it. You need to find something else." So we looked at that. We have had real estate agents look at all kinds of options, except for parking a boat and fishing, which obviously is there. And the last real estate agent we went to, which was Bobby Howell, is that right? He owns a big real estate company here? I don't know. Name's not important. But he said, "The property is worthless unless somebody can build on it. I won't even take your listing." So that's kind of the point we're at now. I take your point. I could park out there and fish. But here's the paragraph I want to stress on this, which is the definition of inverse condemnation. "Inverse condemnation occurs when the regulations of the property's use is so severe that it goes too far and deprives the owner of the property's value, utility, or marketability." And so what I would say in response is, "Yes, I could fish out there, but it certainly deprives me of the marketability of that property and any value of that property."
But you knew that ahead of time, though. It's not like we're changing something that you couldn't sell. You knew you couldn't build a home on it.
When you bought it.
When you bought it.
That's not quite correct. I'd correct the statement by saying this. I did not know that we couldn't build on it. What was explained to me is there are people within the LLC who are making a presentation to the Board of Commissioners to get a text amendment so we can build on it, and we have every confidence that we will be successful. And that's why I'm saying, you know, we bought into this. It was a terrible idea, because as soon as they found fresh money, they all bailed and left us with $500,000 worth of unpaid bank notes. So I don't think they were telling us the truth. You know, I didn't do due diligence. That's my fault. But we didn't go in knowing we couldn't build on it. We went in with the anticipation that we could build on it.
But the people that owned the LLC, who ran the LLC, were aware that at that moment in time, you could not build on it.
I believe and will be correct to say that they knew at that point in time, the UDO would not allow you to build on it.
Correct.
Because that LLC, there was a lawyer and a real estate agent and an architect.
Correct.
So I think that they were hoping they could get the UDO changed.
Correct. But it's... You know, if they represented how tenuous that request was or conditional that request is, then that was on you. But I would suggest that they didn't, in which case, they may not have been completely upfront.
Right.
Not that that ever happens. But the reality comes back to, in the statement that you've just put up there, that we've not changed the regulations to make it unbuildable. That property has been under that regulation since it was purchased. We're just now... We're on this walk, this dance.
Fair point.
To see whether or not there's play, you know, there's an area to play.
If there's any room for...
But there is nothing that this board has done that has made it more regulated, you know, added regulations to bring it to this point.
True point. I accept that. So you've been waiting for this slide, I'm sure. So I'd just say this. My wife and I have made a good faith effort here. I have spent a considerable amount of time not knowing anything about the regulations that drive Currituck County and studying them to try and understand where the issues are and see what we could do in due diligence to correct those or to find some way to work within the system. The ones where there is a text amendment, I believe we have addressed that. The ones that are outside the text amendment, that are these issues raised of concerns about building on an island, you know, I've done the best I can to show you an alternative view that says this could be positive for Currituck County. We've tried to outline how this is consistent with the land use plan in that policy 6.6 statement. And how that can link together with this text amendment to the UDO. And then I would just emphasize, as I've said before, this text amendment is the first in a really long steps to get somebody permission to build on that island. We're not asking for any exemptions on that, or any waivers, or anything of that sort. We just want to be able to have the right to enter the process, or allow somebody else to enter that process, and then if they're successful, then they have done that. But I intend to fully disclose what their issues will be if somebody decides to try and buy this. So I ask the county now to look at this and to please vote in favor of the text amendment so that we can move forward. And I'm happy to answer any more questions.
Questions from the board? I guess there's none at this point. I'll just say, thank you. That was a great presentation. We haven't seen one that well thought out and put together in a long time. So I appreciate your efforts. And if there's nothing further from the board, I'll...
Mr. Chairman, I mean, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. I didn't see that.
Thank you, sir. I've got an open public comment. So... No, sir. You can have a seat. Thank you very much. No, hang out? Thank you. As a matter of fact, I have you signed up for public comment. Would you like to speak during public comment? Okay, thank you. Would anyone else in the audience this evening like to speak on this matter at all? Okay, seeing no one, I will close the public comment. And is there any further discussion from the board at this point?
I would like to ask the county attorney a question. If this were to be approved, it does not offer any guarantee in the process that someone would come in that it will be approved.
It does not... It would just allow for someone to construct a single-family residential dwelling on an island. It does not guarantee the ability to do that. The requirement that there be a note placed on a plat, it's not as if someone's going to be waiving or signing anything, informing the county that they give up any kind of service. It's going to be a statement on the plat that is going to be incumbent upon a purchaser to read and understand what they're buying.
Who does that? Okay. Further discussion from the board?
I have one more comment then. Does it also require on the building permit? I thought... Well, that's what the text agreement requires. It's that statement of services will also be included on the building permit.
Right. But again, it's going to be incumbent upon... And typically, it's a contractor that receives a building permit, not the actual owner of the property.
Right. And it all depends on how the motion's made and what is included in that motion, as to what will go where and when it will go there.
I think he's made a pretty good argument, in my opinion. And I don't know if I don't think it might be something we might like to look at in a work session and discuss it a little further.
Well, that is an option. We could put this off to a later date and have further discussion, maybe. We can do that?
Well, I'll tell you, Mr. Chairman, yeah. And Mr. Lumphord, again, I'll agree with Commissioner Etheridge here. He brought a great presentation. But I also believe as well that the only reason why this text amendment is being brought before the board is to increase the value of that property so that the applicant can get a sale to recoup the funds. Reading through a lot of the staff notes, the concerns, and with our current UDO and policies, yeah, I'm going to move to deny PB 1921 Island Development Tax Amendment because the request is not consistent with the land use plan, because the goal of the land use compatibility section of the 2016 Land Use Plan is to ensure that development and use of resources or preservation of land minimizes direct and secondary environmental impacts, avoid risk to public health, safety, and welfare, and is consistent with the compatibility of land based on consideration of interactions of natural and man-made features. Policy PB 2 of the Land Use Plan states that adequate public facilities sufficient to support associated growth and development must be available. Firefighting, emergency medical services, et cetera, will not be available to the island based on TRC comments. Policy ES 1 of the Land Use Plan states that new development shall be permitted to locate only in areas where suitable soils and adequate infrastructure is available. Adequate public facility, services, infrastructure, firefighting, emergency medical services, law enforcement, and other county services are not available to an island accessibility only by boat. And the request is not reasonable and not in the public interest because adequate public service, again, firefighting, emergency medical services, law enforcement, and other county services are not available to the island only accessible by boat.
Do we have a second? Any further discussion from the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
With the nays have it, myself, Commissioner Beaumont, Commissioner Etheridge. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move that we... I would like to, I guess, table this and bring it to a work session to work out what the specific language would be. My motion would be that I am inclined to support this, but I would like to get the county staff notes together in such a form that we all agree on what we're agreeing to. And I think the presentation was very well done, and I think it bears significant look at making this work and not casting aside.
I believe you need to set a date specific for this to be...
First meeting in December.
You're used to that one. That would be... Second, okay. Thank you. Any further discussion from the board? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. Thank you all. We'll be back in touch. All right. We have tabled this agenda item until the second... First meeting in December, which is December 2nd. Before that time, the board will come together and have a work session to discuss the presentation and further action at that time. So we'll bring it back for a vote again at that point in time for an up or down vote with conditions, one way or the other. So we're in a holding pattern until...
It'll provide more specificity from a county perspective so that there's no confusion amongst staff and the board what it would look like.
I understood you say you support the general concept of the text amendment. Is that...
That's why the vote to voted down failed.
Right. We want to hear more. Thank you. All right. Next agenda item this evening, Item C, PB 18-32, FOST PDR amended. Convert 72 two-sided townhomes to multifamily, and to 35 rear-loaded townhomes, multifamily, add three additional single-family dwelling units, remove alleyways and some roadways, provide additional connectivity to the track to the north, modify the phasing schedule, and other plan revisions in the Moyoc Township. Ms. Sisler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The issue before you tonight is an amendment to the PDR planned development residential zoning designation that was granted earlier this year for this tract of land that we refer to now as the FOST development. Earlier this year, the Board of Commissioners did approve a 513-unit development for a planned unit development residential on this property. So its current zoning is a PDR planned unit, planned development residential. It is designated as full service in the Moyoc Township in the land use plan classification from the 2006 Land Use Plan. For the Moyoc Small Area Plan, it is designated as limited service. So this was a plan that was approved by the BOC in June of this year. And so what's before you tonight is some changes. Majority of these changes are going to take place... Sorry, this is the amended plan request, but the majority of these changes are going to take place in this area of the development up here, where there are going to be the townhomes. And I'm going to zoom in in just a moment, but not to toggle back and forth too much and give everybody motion sickness, but it's going to be in this area of the development where the majority of the changes are going to be taking place. So they're going to be converting 72 two-sided townhomes, multifamily, into 35 TND, traditional neighborhood development townhomes in the multifamily area. Along with that, with this conversion, so they're completely eliminated one style of housing that was part of their original approval. So along with that, because they're converting the two-sided townhomes, they're going to be changing some of the... Eliminating some of the alleyways and some of the roadways. So here you can see some of the changes that are going to be made. You see, in the approved plan, they have a parking area here where now they're going to be... Have the alleyways for the rear accessibility to these units. They're also going to be providing some additional connectivity to the track to the north. So once again, sorry to toggle back and forth, but these are big plans, and I want everyone to see where the additional connectivity is going to be. There's going to be down here and some connectivity here at the townhomes. So where there was a farmland buffer earlier, now there's going to be some connectivity to the Flora track to the north. So here, this is better close-up that you can see that. They're also going to be modifying the phasing schedule and increasing the single-family dwelling units from 350 to 353. So here, let me go through this, the net unit count. So what was approved for multifamily two-sided townhomes was 72. Now, they're proposing to completely eliminate this style of housing, so the net change would be eliminating those 72 units. For the multifamily rear-loaded townhomes, they're going to be adding 35. So what was approved was 91, and what's proposed is 126. They're going to be adding three single-family dwelling units, and they're still going to have up to 22,000 square feet of commercial. So they're proposing 479 units, total dwelling units, which is a decrease in the density. They're also changing their phasing schedule, and this is going to be tedious, and I'm sorry, but I want to walk you through exactly what was approved and then now what they're proposing. Phase one, it was approved for 32 two-sided townhomes, 11 TND, traditional neighborhood development townhomes, 23 traditional neighborhood development, single-family homes, and four conventional single-family homes. Also, for phase one, was going to be the roll and creek improvements that were specified through the terms and conditions. Just for clarification, traditional neighborhood development, when you think of that, that's typically where you have an alleyway accessing the back of the property, and there's where the majority of the traffic would be coming into. They would have it... That's when we think of that. And a little bit smaller setback, smaller yard. So those would be accessible. That's the big key, accessible from the rear. So they're proposing now, in phase one, 25, the traditional neighborhood development townhomes, the 12 TND, single-family homes, and 34 conventional, single-family homes, along with the roll and creek improvements, because once again, they're eliminating the two-sided townhomes. In phase two, approved, 18 TND, single-family homes, 27 conventional, single-family homes, and the main lake in the development. They're proposing 19 TND townhomes, nine TND, single-family homes, and 37 conventional, single-family homes, along with the main lake. For phase three, 14 TND townhomes, 21 TND, single-family homes, the Village Green and the clubhouse, 16 TND townhomes, 14 TND, single-family homes, and 25 conventional, single-family homes, along with the Village Green and the clubhouse. There's now... These are some different changes coming in. For phase four, 26 TND townhomes, 10 TND, single-family homes, 23 conventional, single-family homes, and the up to 22,000 square feet of commercial. And they're proposing now for phase four, 27 TND townhomes, 7 TND, single-family homes... And they're proposing now for phase four, 27 TND townhomes, 7 TND single-family homes, 39 conventional single-family homes, and a multi-use path for phase four. For phase five, what was approved, 20 TND single-family homes, 13 conventional single-family homes, and a swimming pool. Proposed the 17 TND single-family and 20 conventional single-family, along with the swimming pool. For phase six was 40 two-sided townhomes, 27 conventional single-family, and the multi-use path. Now they're eliminating the two-sided townhomes, so now they're going with 21 TND townhomes, 58 conventional single-family homes, and up to 22,000 square feet of commercial. Phase seven was approved at 40 TND townhomes and 33 conventional single-family homes. Proposed 18 TND townhomes with 43 conventional single-family homes. Phase eight was 29 TND single families with 31 conventional single families. Now they're proposing 19 conventional single families. Phase nine, 37 conventional single family. Proposed 19 conventional single family. And phase 10 is being eliminated in their proposal. So that, sorry about that, but that, wanted to make sure we were all knowing about the phasing schedule changes. They are also going to be changing some of the dimensions that were approved in their original terms and conditions, specifically for the TND single-family home. The minimum lot size, they're decreasing from 8,000 square feet to 6,900 square feet. Conventional single-family lot goes from 10,000 square feet to 9,500 square feet. Typical lot size goes for TND single-family, 7,000 to 9,000 square feet. This is reduced from what was approved from 8,000 to 10,000. The conventional single-family lot, typical lot size, was approved from 10,000 to 17,600. Now they're proposing 10,000 to 15,000 square feet. The minimum lot width was approved, sorry, I lost my, at 50. Now reducing that, they're asking for that to be reduced to 35. Conventional single-family, whoops, conventional single-family lot, the minimum lot width is 60, and they're asking it to be reduced to 35. The typical lot width for conventional, they're being at 62, which is actually increasing, or they're decreasing that as well. For the maximum setback for the TND single-family lot, it's reduction. I don't think that is correct. I think this is a typo. Traditional single-family is going from 25 to 75, and conventional from 35 to 140. They're also specifying total lot coverage for TND single-family and for conventional lot coverage, which is going from the TND single-family lot, it's 40% lot coverage, now they're requesting a 60% lot coverage. And a conventional lot, single-family, it was approved at 35% lot coverage, and now they are requesting a 45% lot coverage. The lot coverage for what was proposed, I mean what's approved, did not get cut off. So those are the changes they're making for the dimensional requirements. They are also changing, asking to change some of the terms and conditions, including the first phase of development shall not exceed 71. Currently, the terms and conditions say 70, so they're asking to be, to have 71 in the first phase of development. They're also eliminating if an off-site wastewater service becomes available, development may connect to off-site wastewater service. And they're adding the language, in the terms and conditions, the associated documents, declaration will include provisions that prohibit the filling of wetlands and prohibit the clearing of the buffer areas other than incidental tree cutting and vegetation removal. They're adding the language, except for minor impacts associated with stormwater facilities. So those are the big, the bulk of what they're asking for as far as changes. During the review of this, this proposed amendment, staff found a couple of issues. And in their terms and conditions, in section 4K, they note that rear-loaded traditional neighborhood development may be converted up to conventional single-family dwelling lots at a rate of up to 50% in each phase where there's a TND. So they can, they can switch the types of residential development between traditional neighborhood development or conventional single-family dwellings. Also in section 4K, they state that no more than 22,000 square feet of neighborhood commercial may be converted to residential use. However, although this is an approved part of their terms and conditions, the UDO section, which is the general standard for all PD districts, does not, the UDO does not allow that conversion from non-residential to residential. You can only convert non-residential types of units to non-residential type of units. Residential units can be converted into different types of residential units. So we found that issue, and we would ask that if this proposal is approved, that we address that concern.
What about the section 4K, rear-loaded TND may be converted? Are you saying that's a problem you guys found?
Yes. Not in the difference between the residential dwelling units, but further into 4K, we found out that the 22,000 square feet of neighborhood commercial may be converted to residential use. And that is not allowed by the UDO. The conversion from non-residential to residential is not allowed by the PD standards of the UDO.
So they're just going to have to come back, if they want to change that, they just have to come back before us to amend the schedule?
Correct. If they, this would be, in their conversion schedule.
You can do that, and through this application.
Okay. So we would just have to set a separate?
You would just, well, even if, depending on what you're inclined to do, whether you're inclined to approve the overall amendments or not, I think staff is suggesting that in any event you will want to delete from the terms and conditions, section 4K, that second bullet.
Okay. And the third, well, not then, the UDO section.
That's the section that staff is citing for you to show that that condition is not allowed by the UDO.
Okay.
So the rear-loading townhouses are the ones that can be converted?
They can be converted.
But the two-sided townhouses cannot, correct?
Well, they're being removed.
I know they're being removed, but they could not be converted.
Well, they couldn't convert the neighborhood commercial, whatever business district that they're going to have, business, commercial area that they're going to have, could not convert to a residential use. They were in the terms and conditions, what was approved was up to 22,000 square feet of lower-level commercial with potential living space at the top along the main boulevard end. In their terms and conditions, they were saying if market conditions warrant, they're going to not, you have that and convert that 22, up to 22,000 square feet of commercial to residential. And that's, and they're approved terms and conditions. However, that conversion from commercial space to dwelling space, residential space, is not allowed by the UDO.
But saying if it was allowed, can you, could they have converted a two-sided townhouse if it was used for residential and commercial?
If it was allowed, yeah, they could convert that.
Just to clarify real quick, the issue that Laurie is speaking about, as you all can remember, this was a pretty complex application and process we went through back in January. The language that's in bold up there does not conform to our zoning ordinance or our UDO, and therefore is not legal. So it really shouldn't be in there, about converting from residential for commercial and/or non-residential to residential. The other issue up there, you can convert from residential to a different kind of residential that is allowed under the UDO.
Yeah, so we just need to strike both, too.
But what I was trying to get at, are there certain types of townhouses that can be convert, if you could convert them without it being illegal? Is it just the two-sided, or is it the rear-loaded townhouses that were supposed to be commercial and residential combinations?
I believe those were the rear-loaded along the main entrance in around the boulevard end.
Yeah. So they're increasing that by 35 and getting rid of the ones that they couldn't have converted.
I think the question she's asking is, is there a difference between the types of townhouses as they could be converted? In other words, could the commercial be to the two, could the commercial, square feet of neighborhood commercial, could that only be converted to the TNDs, or could it also be converted to the rear entry?
Well, I think their master plan showed, and this is where it gets into the nuance of how, yeah. So the up to 22,000 square feet of the neighborhood commercial here is in these townhomes along the main boulevard. And I believe that these are going to be the rear-loaded townhomes here.
Would it have mattered?
Other than what they specified on the master plan, I know, but we're getting into the nuance of how complex this is, because they designated this area as the, as the commercial area with those, with the rear-loaded. So not in the terms and conditions they could have, but if you then refer to the master plan, they would have needed to have the rear-loaded, is what they designated on the master plan to have the commercial.
Did we get the proposed plan in our package? Because all I'm seeing is the approved one, and all of the drawings. And I don't know if I didn't load a page when I downloaded this. I just wanted to be able to see it, but I can't always see it.
It's a big one.
Yeah.
It's bigger than it was.
In the package is the proposed one.
Yes, it is.
Page 84.
Yeah, well, 82 is where it starts.
Yeah, page 82.
The amended sketch plan, I guess, is what I'm looking for.
Page 82.
It's such a big plan, and you have to zoom in, and it's.
Hey, that's what I'm looking for.
Yeah.
And so, under the current setup, they can take half of these townhomes out of the proposed 35, up to 50% in each phase of development.
And change them to conventional. That was listed in the terms and conditions, and that is, you can go, under the UDO, you can go residential to residential.
Right, got that. I just, I think we missed it in the first meeting, that they could take out half of the townhome, which was a big selling point, for me anyway, and for myself, if market conditions. So I'll wait for the applicant before we let him adjust some of that, what that means to them.
And also during this process, in terms and conditions, section four, for the off-site stormwater improvements, there was a note in there that if the developer is unable to obtain the right of entry four months after zoning approval, which happened in June, that the developers will provide fee and lieu in the amount of 115% of the cost of the improvements. The zoning approval was granted in June. This did arise at the planning board level during planning board discussion, and the applicant said that they had most of the approval, but I think still lacking, still lacking some property owner approval for right of entry. So the Board of Commissioners determined that the original PDR zoning request was consistent with the 2006 land use plan and the Moyac small area plan, because it is consistent with all the review standards provided under the UDO, section 2.4.3.3C. The conditions placed on the development would improve drainage problems on the property and within nearby ranch land and Eagle Creek subdivisions if improvements can be made to the drainage system on all-site properties, and it is compatible with the existing Moyac Township subdivision. So the BS, the board also determined that the original request was reasonable and in the public interest because it is required by changed conditions acknowledged in the land use plan and addresses a demonstrated community need, providing a full-service area that offers mixed-use development, both residential and commercial components. So with that determination made by the board, the TRC and the planning board recommends approval of this amendment because it does show connectivity to the northern track that is, we have received a proposal for development on that. It does reduce the density from 513 dwelling units to 479. So with that, I will answer any questions that the board may have.
Further questions?
Is it also, did I not understand you correctly, is reducing the lot sizes also?
It is. Let me get back here. I'm sorry, we tried to cram a lot of information. But for the traditional, single-family lots, they are reducing from 8,000 square feet, they're proposing to reduce to 6,900 square feet. And conventional single-family lot from 10,000 square feet to 9,500, so they are reducing lot size and the typical lot size for both of those traditional single-family and conventional single-family lot. They are proposing.
So it's going to make it look more congested?
It's going to, it's going to reduce the lot size and make it appear denser on the plan.
All right. Anything further from Ms. Laurie? All right, at this time, I'll invite the applicant up or representative to speak. Or both.
Mr. Chairman.
Good evening. Long time no see.
I'm trying to be brief. Do you, I'd like to start with the drainage improvements.
I ask for a status on that. Do you happen to have the stormwater conditions mapped? These, this is a graphic representation of the stormwater improvements that were agreed to in the, in the terms and conditions, and this is an accurate representation of what was agreed to. And we've been working to get agreements to improve approximately 9,000, 900 feet of ditches, which would be putting them on grade, widening them, laying them back at 301 slopes to make it easy to maintain, and about 4,350 feet of downstream clearing and snagging to make sure there are no obstructions. And those improvements affect some 20 properties, and 16 of those property owners have agreed, including all of the ones that involve the ditch improvements. And in value, those 16 represent about 95% of the, of the construction value of those improvements.
When you say that, are you talking about the stuff off-site? Right, you're talking about downstream?
Eagle Creek to the outlet staff of Roland Creek Estates.
Okay.
There are a couple of people who have known, or a couple of people who just haven't responded. There's one of the neighbors who wants to have a little time to work on a couple of those neighbors to maybe get that. the, of those neighbors to maybe get that turned into a yes.
Okay.
It benefits the whole, the whole community.
So is the thought to go on those, the properties you can access, to go ahead and do a snag and clear on those, is that what your, is there any, what's, what's the plan there? I mean, if you don't get all of them, do we go fee in lieu of?
If we don't get all of them, the agreement is that.
We're gonna go fee.
We put up the value of those in lieu.
Okay.
An escrow account, one hundred fifteen percent.
Which side of the highway are they on? Are they on this section from Eagle Creek to?
Yeah, they're down, downstream.
Downstream.
Where are we needing?
Roland Creek Estates area.
Okay. That's my, that's my question.
Go, you gonna go to work for him? Get those permissions for us?
Apparently Mike Doxey was able to get those at one point in time.
I would suggest then Mike do it.
Okay.
Let Mikey do it.
I didn't know something else in there.
So any, any, before I go into the amended terms.
Two noes, is that two, is, you said somebody's working on those or whatever it may be from your, y'all's group or somewhere. So there was, of the twenty, there was definitely two noes.
Neighbor who was told that, that they were, that might be in favor of it on one of those.
Someone else to approach him rather than you guys type deal?
So what kind of distance are we talking about with those two landowners?
I can show you a graphic here, I've actually got a map.
Come on in, water's fine.
Bringing a dark blue is a gray, there's two sections in yellow.
Okay. I got it?
And they're both off of Guinea Road?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
And the value that is, is fairly low.
Okay.
But we'd rather, really rather do the improvements.
So, so would we rather you do them?
So we'd like to just keep that condition in there.
Okay.
We're not ready to go to construction yet. I'd like to just kind of walk you through briefly the, the amendments that are being proposed in Section Four of the ordinance. If you could follow me starting on page ninety-three of your, of the packet. The only change on that page is the first page is not exceeding seventy-one versus seventy, and that just kind of worked out that way in the, in the final phasing plan to, to the construction. On page ninety-four, we are removing the off-site wastewater service paragraph at the request of staff, since there's not a viable off-site alternative available right now. Page ninety-five, the only change there is we're changing the term cottage lots, which was in the original Terms and Conditions, to TND lots, because cottage lots has a particular UDO definition, which is really not what we're talking about, talking about the traditional neighborhood developer lots. At Section ninety-six, or page ninety-six, the only change there is, except for minor impacts associated with stormwater management facilities, and that language is right out On page ninety-seven, we have, we are proposing to change some development standards. Of course, we're slightly eliminating the two-sided townhome column. And most of these changes have to do with just where we are in the final design. You know, we're at a, a general plan that's going to a more specific plan, and as we get to a more specific plan, we find that there are certain things that, that really didn't fit well originally. For example, this minimum lot with thirty of, that is being changed to thirty-five feet. Those are still sixty-two foot lots, but you have, do we have the master plan available to look at?
Is it narrow at some points on the lots where compressed and?
Well, we have this current road that runs around the Village Green, and those lots are really similar to cul-de-sac lots. They start narrow and they widen.
Right.
And that's also the purpose for increasing the maximum setback. Where, on some of those lots, like around the Village Green or some curved, curved roads, where you have lots backing up to the canal, you have larger setbacks to kind of line those lots up, those houses up with adjacent houses. Like examples, you look at the, how to, how to describe this. Kind of northwest corner adjacent to the canal, the front section, you can see where you have it, is almost a flag lot, or a couple of lots like that that require those, those longer setbacks until they widen out to your, your full with building site. Because these are just things that came up during the final design.
Could put a couple less houses there, broaden those lots out too.
We're putting thirty-four less houses there. And as far as the, the lot coverage, you know, as we, as we actually develop specific site plans for houses, and particularly the, the TND lots, rather than using the standard stuff, we're, we're seeing what is actually required. We want the lot coverage to accommodate the building. We don't want it to be more than we need, because when we do that, we need to accommodate that in the stormwater modeling. So that's, that's what we're doing, that's really what it takes to develop the house with the driveways, the parking, accessories, chargers, and so forth. As far as the typical lot size, you know, we have ten thousand to fifteen thousand. There are actually some lots in there that are over twenty thousand, which are actually bigger than were in the original plan, but we didn't call those typical lots because the typical, really the ten to fifteen, we're just trying to be accurate. If you look at the Schedule B, on page ninety-eight, the phasing schedule was modified based on really being farther along in design, trying to do logical phase lines based on the construction scheduling for stormwater improvements, roads, site utilities, and so forth, and then still also to have housing choices in each phase as much as possible. You know, we have nine phases instead of ten because we have eliminated the development of the utility site where the wastewater treatment is going to be, which would have been the tenth phase of this plan. And overall, we have, as I said, reduced the dwelling units from five hundred and thirteen to four hundred and seventy-nine, so a thirty-four unit reduction. And then finally, in Schedule C, which is page ninety-nine, we have just provided an additional standard that, that wasn't addressed in the Terms and Conditions document for a different kind of a roadway, which is a rural park without a, without a bike lane. I'll be right back, any further questions?
Not about, well, I, I brought it up earlier when I was talking to Ms. LaCicero about this fifty cent reduction. So you're taking?
We're willing to eliminate that.
Okay, I was gonna say, it's only thirty-five townhomes, so, okay. That was, that was my big concern, was keeping some of those townhomes.
And I think Ms. Swigley suggested letting?
Okay.
You're still leaving some of the boulevards with the bike lanes, correct?
Oh, the entire main boulevard has bike lanes, from the entrance up to and around the Village Green. That's, we haven't changed that from the approved plan. But the section of boulevard that goes from the Village Green to the roundabout, and the section that goes from the Village Green to the south end, actually didn't have a standard, but was identified in the, in the approved terms.
Thank you, sir.
I have about an hour?
Yes, hour and a half. Take your time.
Well, that previous gentleman brought that up, so sorry.
We, we will be leaving, but you continue on.
I'm David Flaherty, I'm here on behalf of the applicant, three oh one, Devil Street. The TRC and Planning Board correctly recommended the approval of this very straightforward amendment, because nothing has materially changed since this board voted to approve this matter.
Thank you. And these, and these conditions were finalized in June. And Ms. LaCicero did a great job of highlighting what those specific changes were. We talked a lot through the phasing, the lot sizes, the reduced minimal amount of those changes. But fundamentally, you still have the same plan before you. We're still providing a mix of the residential and commercial. We're still providing a mix of the types of residential products that are available in this subdivision. And we're still providing the important drainage improvement commitments, both onsite and offsite. None of those have changed. And as Mark pointed out in the track changes version of the amended Terms and Conditions, that was item seven CD, the changes that we've made here actually decrease the density and the project's impact, so it brings it even more in line with the land use plan and the reasons that you all voted to approve this back in June when this was finalized. And those are namely that we're decreasing the overall units by thirty-four lots from five thirteen to four, four seventy-nine. We're removing the option for the off-site wastewater treatment, which gives you more certainty about how that's going to be handled. We're providing the additional connectivity to the north and lots connecting to the flora tract. And we've changed the phasing and the lot sizes mainly just to react to market conditions. The phasing was, was put in place and the commercial was only moved from phase four to phase six in order to make sure we have sufficient amount of rooftops on the ground and make that commercial very vibrant and, and successful. And that was based on discussions we had with our marketing personnel to make the project more viable. The lot sizes are, are reducing, but I note with the calculations that Ms. LaCicero cited to you, the lot sizes themselves are only reducing by about fifteen percent, twelve to fifteen percent, depending on which of the areas. So we're not talking about a mass horribly dense or, or reduced size, we're talking about a very minor tweak in both of the lot sizes and the phasing plan. And as I said, each of these only stand to make the project even more consistent with the two thousand and six land use plan, and thus the proposal remains consistent with that plan, and the same values that you look to, the consistency policy statements that you look to back in February, and then when we went for you in May with the corrected versions of the Terms and Conditions, still apply today, and this, this changes even further support those, those consistency statements. Now, I won't go through each of those, but suffice it to say that this is in the full service area. The, the staff report correctly noted that Policy HN1 seeks to put density in the appropriate location and found this policy consistent with the land use plan density. Recall that that density allocation is three to four units per acre. This proposal would be far less than that at two or two, two point two-five. We're still providing the several housing types, and again, that was another consistency statement that the staff specifically cited to in their staff report, to note that the changes are still consistent with the land use plan and planning principles. And we, as we cited before, there's a compact design, and all of the traditional principles that made this project unique and something special for Currituck County still apply today. It's just the minor modification at the front of the subdivision there, and for those reasons, we'd request that you find that this plan is still consistent, like you did back in, back in the spring of this year. However, we do note some of the changes that staff raised, and we're, we're happy to work with them. Ms. LaCicero noted, I note the staff report doesn't list any specific outstanding issues of concern, but Ms. LaCicero did raise those with us last week, and so we took a look at those. And I think it might be easiest to follow along in the staff, those revised Terms and Conditions, so we can see exactly what we would like to change. The first issue was the, the rights of entry guarantee. I, I believe Mr. Bissell noted that we have the majority of these, and when he looked at it, it was not only the majority of the kind of real estate, but the majority of the value. And the requirement in the condition, and that was in four, one, Section Six, said that if we weren't able to get all of those off-site consents, letter of consents, to do the off-site drainage within four months of approval, then our only obligation was to put up the one hundred and fifteen percent as a payment in lieu for those improvements. We still believe, and I think the chairman echoed, that we would prefer to do all of those improvements, and so we've kept that condition in here, giving us a little extra time to get those extra consents. We believe that's the appropriate way to do it. At this point, we could just put up the, the payment in lieu, but we would rather go forward with those consents and work with those landowners to see if we can't get all of them under control. If we're not, we think the most sensible thing to do would be to put up the payment in lieu for those that we aren't able to get, and to go ahead and do the improvements for the ones where we are able to get consent. We think that's in the county's best interest. We'd be able to do that more efficiently and probably more quickly than the county would be able to if they had to mobilize and, and wait for all of those consents to do, to come in. So the way that we've worded it is the same as it was before you in May, in that our obligation is just to put up the payment in lieu, but with your, with your permission, we'd prefer to go ahead and do those improvements ourselves. The condition, so that, that condition has not changed, but we're happy to, to consider anything that the board would like there. On Condition four K, I was prepared to remove the, the conversion of the commercial, I think based on the chairman's comments, we would just strike four K altogether, and that would leave us probably with some renumbering that we would have to do and that we can work out with Ms. LaCicero after the fact. But we believe with those changes, that we've met all of the concerns that the county's raised, that the plan is consistent with what you found before, and that you should follow the recommendation of both the TRC and the Planning Board, and approve the request with the slight modifications that we've discussed tonight, because it is consistent with the two thousand and six land use plan, and it is reasonable and in the public interest because it provides a reduced amount of lots, but still provides a great variety of housing in this area, and the needed drainage improvements that would occur both onsite and offsite. If the board has concerns, I'd be happy to address those now, but I would like to address them before you go into deliberation, in case there's concerns we haven't brought up or the staff hasn't brought up. And I'd like to reserve just a minute or two, if there's any concerns raised from the public comment, that we might be able to respond to those.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions?
The, the striking four K, oh, sorry, strike, thank you. Striking four K, is that the, that's the thing that they weren't allowed to do?
Twenty-two thousand? Correct, it is, it's the conversion of the commercial to residential, but it also hits Chairman White's concern about losing some townhomes. So they're, they're eliminating that one completely, so there's no going to be conversion of those, up to fifty percent of the townhomes. Yeah, so that addresses our concern and chairman's concern.
Mr. Chairman, if I can.
Yes.
I think from a staff perspective on the, gosh, it's the one about the four months, just to make it clean, if we can just set a longer timeframe?
That's what I was gonna suggest.
And just clean it up that way is probably the easiest way, so that way we're not So that way, we're not operating out of, on non-compliant terms and conditions.
I think it seemed like one of the original concern was if we didn't get them before they got into it, we would never get them to get, but.
They got a majority of them.
Right. They got a majority. Well, I'm thinking if we give them through Phase One up and before submittal Phase Two, possibly, that gives them plenty of time to go in there. But that's up to the board at this point, but just as a matter of giving them plenty of time because, as she said, I think they could do it more efficiently than we can in the end, and it gives them plenty of time to work through those permissions. And that would be months from now or.
Right.
Right.
So you're, the proposal would be to take out the four months and, or take out the payment and lieu altogether, or just the payment and lieu?
The payment and lieu.
Okay.
Just change the timing.
Just the timing to allow you guys to work through Phase One, and then before you come to Phase Two for submittal, you either have to make the payment and lieu or have the permissions in place and have done that.
Okay. That's, we don't have an issue with the timing. I'm just confirming that the improvements are to be done in Phase One, so they'd be completed through Phase One, and we would just have until prior to recording Phase Two, correct?
Prior to recording Phase Two.
Okay.
Right. Everybody agreeable to that, the board?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. That gives it set time.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Anything further questions, comments?
Well, she said now, either through Phase One, all the drainage improvements would be completed before.
Prior to recording Phase Two.
Or, yeah, or they would have to pay the.
Fee and lieu.
Okay.
Right. Just giving them more time to work through it.
All right, thanks.
Yes, correct. I just wanted to note that the improvements are called to be completed in Phase One, so I just want to make sure we didn't get sideways on that timing. Yeah.
Okay.
All right. I'll be happy to answer any questions after the public comment.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Madam, does she have one?
Of course. Please say.
Regarding the small number of lots that are actually reduced below the 10,000 square feet, there is a corresponding increase in the amount of open space that's being set aside.
Oh, all right. Good point. All right, so I do not have anyone signed up for public comment this evening. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this item this evening? Seeing no one, I'll close public comment. Any further discussion from the board? I'll up the floor for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I will move to approve PV 18-23, false plan development amended because, one, it is consistent with all the review standards provided under the UDO, Sections 2.4, 3.0, C, as of the Board of Commissioners on 6/24/19. The conditions, number two, the conditions placed on the development will improve drainage problems on the property within nearby ranchland and Eagle Creek subdivisions if improvements are made to the drainage system on offsite properties. It is compatible with the existing Moyart Township subdivisions. The amendment lowers net density by 34 units. The drainage and utility conditions in the June 4, 2019 approved order remain unchanged. Under the conditions also, we will strike 4K and amend the timing of the stormwater improvements from four months to the recording of Phase Two. And the request is reasonable and in the public interest because, one, it is required by changed conditions acknowledged by the land use plan and addresses a demonstrated community need, providing a full service area that offers mixed-use development with both residential and commercial components.
Mr. Chairman, if I may add one thing that I just had in my notes, when he said the part after striking 4K of the drainage and everything complete before the recording of Phase Two, can we add in the language, I know it's his motion, the fee and lieu, the 115 percent, if it was not, is that something we can add?
We're not striking these fees.
We didn't strike.
No, no, no. I know we struck the 4K after he said that, when he said the, before they could record the plat for Phase Two, they either had to have all the improvements where we gave them more time, or the second part was they could put up the bond. Does that need to be added in there?
No, it was already in there.
It was already in there?
Yeah. We just changed the timeframe, but the.
The bond's still there. Okay.
The meat of it's still there.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll say in it.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion from the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
All right, the ayes have it. Moving on to new business. A, through the fence airport easement for 118 Aviator Drive, Brady Landing Airport, Maple.
Mr. McCree?
Yes. There's been, I think, a good description of what this agenda item is about in the cover page, but I'll just briefly go through it. In October of 1999, the Board of Commissioners approved Brady Landing subdivision in Maple, which is a residential airpark subdivision located along the fence line of the county airport. The concept allowed for property owners to be able to maintain aircraft on their properties and then go through the fence separating the county airport from the subdivision to access the county runway. In 2002, the county actually conveyed an easement to the property owner association for Brady Landing Airpark, and then that was modified in 2014. However, in the meantime, the Lou Singers lot was created by virtue of a family subdivision, and if not part of, at least is within and adjacent to Brady Landing. And so in 2014, it was an oversight, not to include their lot, when we referenced the plats that had previously gone to record for the remainder of Brady Landing. What is proposed to you then is to convey to the Lou Singers an easement, the same easement with the same conditions as all the other property owners within Brady Landing Airpark. We also wanted to make sure that the Federal Aviation Administration had no problem with this because it now does not favor these through-the-fence operations, and included in your agenda package was an email from the FAA stating that there was no objection to conveying this easement for this one additional lot. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. McCree?
Move for approval.
Oh, Ms. Kitty? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item B, IT budget amendment for security require computer replacements. Mr. Steck.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a, an issue that was brought to my attention. I've sent some information out to the board about it in the past. We are under a little bit of a time crunch on this, so basically, Microsoft is going to stop supporting Windows 7 January 14. And what that means is every week, they send out a, some updates to Windows 7 that make it less vulnerable to attacks from outside forces. If you have Windows 7 after January 14, you are putting yourself at risk from an IT standpoint. And I have our IT, I can't remember his job title off the top of my head, but Logan Sties is in the back. You have any really technical questions? The gist of it is that we, some, we have a lot of computers that are so old, they cannot run Windows 10, which is the new operating system.
I think we have some of those.
I think you guys probably do have some of those. And so.
What? These?
Those. And so because of that, normally, I would like to do IT upgrades in a more timely manner and phase it in over years, but the fact is, it puts us at way too much risk to do that this time. You'll see a budget amendment in, for, you're gonna have a couple of budget amendments as we go into the TDA and into Ocean Sands as well, but the budget amendment for the Board of Commissioners to review right now is for $487,669. That revenue that we're gonna use to cover that, $100,000, is in increased investment earnings above and beyond what we expected to bring in from the budget, some occupancy tax money because some of those computers actually live within those positions, and then $367,074 from fund balance. We have some other things that are gonna cover some of the charges in our utilities, such as utility charges, reconnection fees, and that kind of thing, but the bulk of this is gonna come from fund balance. At the end of the year, I don't know if it's actually gonna come out of fund balance. We might earn more revenue than we anticipate, which is not uncommon for Currituck County. But in either case, fund balance, I think, is specifically set aside for just these kinds of emergencies. When you, you have a one-time, non-recurring cost, you have to pay out in order to protect the assets of Currituck County, so.
Do we get new computers? Because I'm not approving this.
The man in the back says, he's shaking his head yes.
I had to go buy one, I couldn't. An antiquated dinosaur.
So, he might even have options on size, so you'll have to talk to him about.
All right, all right.
No, I'm not like that.
I can just.
Your laptop's gonna be the size of that monitor.
I'd be happy to answer any questions. I do hate bringing this kind of expenditure before you in the middle of the year, but it was an unforeseen expense, but I think it's something we do have to do.
Yeah, otherwise, we're at jeopardy of.
And it's timely because if we do it tonight, it gives us enough time to order the computers and get them deployed by January 14. There are maybe a couple of positions that wouldn't have them deployed by that time, but these are not positions that are hooked up to the network as much, and so.
Right.
Not as big of a concern, but.
Logan's gonna be.
Mr. Chairman, I will move, we approve the budget amendment.
What's that?
I move that we approve the budget amendment.
And I'll second it.
Second it? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, board appointments, reapportment of Ms. Vivian Simpson to the jury commission.
I'll second it.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Well done, Logan.
Right, right. Good job.
Dressed up, man.
Got him dressed up for nothing.
He didn't even get to come up and go on camera.
What?
All right.
Keep it together.
We don't have much time left. D, consent agenda.
Move for approval.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
I do have one thing about the consent agenda.
Okay.
When I was looking at it, there was a budget amendment for the cooperative extension of the senior health insurance information program, which they call SHIP. And that's for, anybody who doesn't know, that's for Medicare. And if you have any questions, it's open season. And I think he's pointing to the county attorney, telling him it's open season for him. You have until December the 7th. And if you are very concerned about Medicare, if you've ever looked at it, it is quite confusing. And they do have people with the cooperative extension who can really help you a lot. So just give them a call. You can set up an appointment, and they will answer all your questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
They are super helpful in that. My father with his. Yeah.
He's older than he looks. All right. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
First and second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. I will now open the special meeting of the Tourism Development Authority. We have a TDA budget amendment this evening. Mr. Stack, is that you?
Yep, I'm gonna go pretty quick. The first budget amendment is some money to move electrical services on the grounds of historic Corolla Park, and the other one is for the IT-related issue.
All right. Move for approval.
Is that moved?
Second. She said so moved, I said second.
Okay.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Well, Ms. Kitty again. I heard her voice first. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. I will now open the special meeting of the Ocean Sands Water and Sewer District.
This budget amendment is also for the computer upgrades.
Ah, okay.
Move for approval.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
And we need an adjournment, please.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.